Welcome to City Hall and good evening to all of you. Thank you for attending our very first evening meeting of the year. This again will be one of four evening time meetings that we will host here at City Hall to increase engagement with our citizens. We will call this meeting to order now, and with us today is Pastor Donna Goldtree of St. Paul's United Methodist Church. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you all to join us. Pastor Goldtree, I also have something special for you that I'll come up.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If you'll be in a mindful presence with me. Holy One, as we gather tonight at the reemergence of the long dormant practice of meeting in the evenings, may tonight's council meeting be a vision cast and received as one of inclusion, of inviting those who spend their days laboring at work or school or businesses to participate within the community more fully. And as our elected leaders weigh all the varied voices that they are going to hear, may they be mindful of the complexities and the importance of the actions that they must take into account when they're making their decisions. May they listen to wisdom from staff that they have received. May they cast an eye to the future, not to the future that is just at the end of this day or this year, but for the community for many years to come. And may the decisions always be mindful of justice for our neighbors. Guide us to keep those universal rules of love of our neighbor and seeking justice at the forefront. We are grateful for those who have committed their time and talents to governing Wichita, both those elected to these positions as council members and those on the staff who serve them, and all the citizens who bring their voices to be heard. Together, may they seek, Lord, the balance of opportunities for growth and safety and living well in the city of Wichita. And so we end by saying, so be it. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Pastor Goldtree. Before we begin the rest of the procedure for today's meeting, I would like to move that public comment be allowed during the council member agenda item. And this just requires a simple majority to allow this public comment to occur.
Second.
Motion passes seven zero. This will allow public comment during the council member agenda item regarding public comments and public agenda items. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 5th, 2024.
Do we have any changes or corrections? See none, I move that we approve those minutes. Second. Any other discussion? See none, Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Proclaimations procurement month.
Thank you for joining us. I had an opportunity to visit the 12th floor where our procurement team resides and got to learn about their efforts and what these professionals do to help us as a community make sure that taxpayer dollars are utilized properly and most efficiently and effectively. So it is my honor to proclaim on the behalf of the city of Wichita, which was founded in 1870, whereas the public procurement profession plays an important role in obtaining the greatest value for each taxpayer dollar spent in the procurement of goods and services. And whereas the purchasing division of the city of Wichita provides logistical and operational support to all departments within the city of Wichita and works to ensure fair and transparent procurement practices, procurement in compliance with applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. And whereas the purchasing division is committed to providing high-quality services, efficiently and effectively strengthening supplier relationships and promoting emerging and disadvantaged business enterprise program opportunities. And whereas the Institute for Public Procurement has proclaimed the month of March as procurement month to further expand the awareness of the procurement professional's role to governmental officials, the general public, businesses, and corporate leaders. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as procurement month in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to join us in recognizing the role of the procurement and supply chain profession within business, industry, and government.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As we pass the halfway point in March, it's with immense gratitude that I stand before you and express our collective appreciation and recognition of the purchasing office's staff's continued efforts and unwavering dedication to our city and its citizens. I want to thank the city manager, assistant city managers, director of finance, and city council for their continued support and commitment. Thank you to the departments and vendors who without would not give us a reason to support, facilitate, and advocate for. The city's investment demonstrates the belief that we do not just purchase, but we seek the greatest value for each dollar spent while ensuring fairness and integrity. Procurement Month highlights our profession, but more importantly, it recognizes the actual people who make this investment materialize, people who embody the city's achievement of excellence in procurement for 22 years, people who completed in 2023 445,588,352 dollars and 79 cents in actual purchases overseen, 31,817,000 P-card transactions administered, 1,821 purchase order issues, and 530 new and renewed contracts, 377 solicitations published. My deepest gratitude and respect go to our staff, Valerie Fallow, Kyle Beckstrom, Tracy Jordan, Chris Hazlitt, Leanne Hendricks, Prabell Nima, and Jason Brogdon. You directly contribute to the city of Wichita being the leading-edge organization that serves a dynamic and inclusive community. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Recognition of Miss Kansas Teen.
May I please have the contestants and our current and former Miss Kansas Teen to the front, please? We often talk about young people, and these young people being the future of our community. I want to give each of these young ladies the opportunity to tell you their community service initiative, because these young ladies serve our community through community service initiatives, and these young ladies represent the good of our youth. And I'm really grateful for the opportunity to have been at the Miss Kansas Organization competition last week. The teen competition was held here in Wichita, Kansas, where they celebrated the 20th anniversary. And we said goodbye to the 2023 title holder, Erin Rolf, and said hello and welcome to our new Miss Kansas Teen 2024, Avery Mountain. So I would appreciate each of these young ladies telling you their community service initiative.
Hello, everyone. I'm Erin Rolf. I'm Miss Kansas Teen 2023, and my community service initiative is mental wellness. It starts with you, which encourages you to find an outlet that helps you stay mentally happy and healthy. And through the Miss Kansas Organization, which is a part of the Miss America Opportunity, that name is truly testament to what the organization is. It's given me opportunities to spread my community service initiative and to really make an impact with mental health. And throughout my year, I was able to reach over 250,000 people with my community service initiative, and I'm really glad that the organization gave me the opportunity to really make an impact and to do that. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Avery Mountain, your Miss Kansas Teen 2024, and my community service initiative is Just a Kid Like Me. I educate others about children with additional needs and the importance of looking past their differences and loving them for who they are. I also have my very own Just a Kid Like Me camps, which I founded and hosted at the age of 12. After four camps, hosting 50 campers and 70 of my typical peers as my volunteers, I had the opportunity to learn that 42% of my campers had never been in an inclusive environment such as the ones I create with my camps. So my mission is to change the way the world looks at individuals with additional needs and remind everyone that people are just like snowflakes. No two are ever the same, which makes us all unique, each in our own special way. As an award-winning advocate for children of all abilities, I'm creating a world where every child feels free to be just a kid like me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bella Andra, and I actually just placed third runner-up at the Miss Kansas Teen Pageant this past weekend, and my community service initiative is my nonprofit, She Speaks. I created it to help prevent sexual assault and spread awareness by sharing my story, and I've accomplished this by leading self-defense workshops. I've partnered with a local sheriff deputy here in Wichita, and these workshops consist of stories being told about my personal stories and things that I've experienced. I'm able to share that with girls of all ages throughout the community and then also being able to lead the self-defense itself. And being able to have the opportunity to educate girls on this across my community and across my state and someday, hopefully, across my country is really, really meaningful to me because I feel like it's something not necessarily talked about enough, and I want to be able to make that change. Thank you.
Hi, you all. My name is Tiana Hardwell, and I am a candidate for Miss Kansas Teen. I've actually placed as non-finalist top talent. My talent is hip-hop dance, which I'm very proud of. And my community service initiative is the Empowerment Project. So I created the Empowerment Project to help other young girls like myself see their self-worth and to give them tools to overcome cyberbullying. So I am very proud to have talked to more than 150 students, Wichita and Derby, and I want to continue my work because I really believe that if we advocate for others, we can empower everyone. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lakshmi Sri Shiva Kumar. I am your Miss Wichita Asian Festival 2023, and I had the honor of being your second runner-up at Miss Kansas Teen 2024. My community service initiative is called No Plate Left Empty, advocating for food insecurity in children. And throughout my Pageant journey, I've had the honor of collaborating with multiple nonprofit organizations such as Humankind Ministries, the All India Mission for SEVA, Educate to Empower, and many more. And at Humankind Ministries, I've been able to host dance sessions, meditation sessions, nutritional cooking classes, and just be able to provide meals for those in need to help combat not just the raw form of food insecurity, but the mental health effects that come after it, while also being able to collaborate with Aim for SEVA and Educate to Empower to provide a sustainable solution to food insecurity by educating those in need to empower themselves and stand on their own feet. I'm so honored for this opportunity, and I'm so, so proud of not just Erin Rolf, but also Avery Mountain, this packet of energy, just the most beautiful person I know. Thank you so much.
Thank you again to our youth and our community who really do make an impact, and as you could hear from their community service initiatives, these are young people we should be proud of. And so it is my honor to recognize the outgoing title holder, Erin Rolf, with a certificate of recognition for a year of service as Miss Kansas Teen 2023 and an advocate for mental health awareness through her community service initiative, Mental Wellness, It Starts With You. Erin embodies the values of Wichita through her leadership and service to the community. Thank you for your commitment to our home. Before we continue the rest of the meeting, I will make an announcement that for those who came and had a ticket to get into the parking lot, the gates will be open when you leave, so you will not have to pay when you leave City Hall. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public Agenda, Shane Turner, Building Projects Downtown.
Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Shane Turner. I am 43 years old, and I have high-functioning autism. I want to thank you for having me here today and willing to listen to me in regards to my project I'm going to talk about. As we all know, Wichita is the air capital of the world. Wichita is a beautiful city, but I can't help but notice how there is a lack of tourism during the day, especially during weekdays, and there's no place to go to get views of the city from high up. The Epic Center is a nice tall building, but there is no observation area at all in that building. As a person who loves observation areas and views of the city, it can be quite frustrating when there is nowhere to go in Wichita. So I have an icon I would like to share with you. I came up with this icon about two years ago. I call it the Wichita Skyrocket. It would be similar to something like the St. Louis Arch, the Space Needle in Seattle, the Washington Monument in DC, or the Reunion Tower in Dallas. The project will possibly consist of a couple of buildings, several small planes that hold like five to 10 people, and a cable that will take them to the top to where a large plane will be and the observation area will also be. However, this is negotiable, and I would like feedback from other people, possible renderings, as this project is not set in stone. This project would be roughly around 500 feet to the observation deck and around 550 feet to the very top. This height is also negotiable and will be dependent on other feedback. So for your information, I got this information, the Epic Center is 320 feet to the top floor, 325 feet to the roof where there is no slope, and 385 feet tall to the tip of the iconic sloped roof. I had a drone company that resides in the Garmin Center called DroneTography, who was kind enough to measure the Epic Center with their drones. They told me from the ground to the highest point on the roof, their drones showed 387 feet above ground level. So the 385 feet figure is pretty accurate. The official height of the Epic Center is listed as 325 feet, but that is only at the bottom of the roof where there is no slope. I do wonder why the official height is not the actual height, which is significantly higher. I would like to see this project, if it were approved, to be started around maybe the spring or summer of 2025 and finished around the summer of 2027 or the spring of 2028. Of course, this is also negotiable. I'm not sure how this project would be funded, but I was thinking maybe through a fundraising, maybe a half percent tax on the people of the metro, that's if they're willing, though, for a couple of years, or maybe being part of the Wichita Legacy Master Plan. I believe a group out of Kansas City, Missouri, called Populous is actually assisting with the Wichita Legacy Master Plan. So I wonder if they would be able to draw some possible renderings of my project. I would like to see this project built maybe downtown or a few miles outside of downtown or wherever it could be built. I think Wichita is ready for change, and I believe this would help with tourism. There are other cities such as Oklahoma City and Omaha that are building up, and I also believe my project would help with competition. Lastly, I would like to bring to your attention, I have a petition under change.org under the Wichita Skyrocket, and it has gained nearly 1,000 signatures. Once again, I would like to say thank you for your time.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Sir, I would just like to say thank you so much for coming to share your project with us, and if you have any documentation that you could leave for each of us to look over, then I'd love to take a closer look. Thanks for coming.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Shane, thank you for being here. I appreciate your engagement over the years as well. I think that's a great idea. I did not know that the Epic Center was 387 feet, and you want to go above that. My fear of heights, I probably would never go up there, but I think that's a great idea, and I think it would be great for East or West Bank development. I think it would be something unique to have downtown, so I appreciate you adding to that conversation, and hopefully when we get that conversation going again, that can be a part of it.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you for joining us this evening, and if you haven't been to the top of the 13th floor of City Hall, I would love to take you sometime. It's one of the best views of the city as well, and you can see all the angles from every corner of the city end to end, and so please reach out, and I'd love to take you up there sometime.
Councilmember Ho Heisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir, for coming. I appreciate it. I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Glasscock's suggestion. We can go ahead and just rent out the 13th floor. There's not a whole lot going on up there, so. But anytime you guys would like to come up and take a view, please get ahold of us. We'd be glad to pick you up and just let you look at the skyline.
I will just add, thank you very much for your comments today, and all of our email addresses are on the website, so just let us know and we'll get that set up. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Janice Bradley, Illegal U.S. Action Supporting Genocide in Gaza.
Good morning. My name is Janice Bradley, and I'm with District 6. The first thing I'd like to do is to just let you know that we just passed an anniversary on March 16th. Was the 21st anniversary of the, actually, the murder of Rachel Corey. Rachel Corey was an activist from Olympia, Washington. She was 23 years old, and she was with an international organization fighting against housing demolitions in Gaza. And she had a big bright red-orange vest on, and there was a bulldozer that saw her clearly, but ended up backing over her and killing her. And I'm just bringing this up because it's an example of the kind of acts that have been carried on in Israel-Palestine for so many years, and this was 2003, March 16th. And her parents tried to take some action, but the fact is, Israel military commits these acts with impunity. Nothing happens to, as a punishment or correction, and lives are lost. And this is happening today as well with an enormous scale, but I wanted to say something about Rachel because I've known about this for many years. On January 26th, 2024, the International Court of Justice found that it is plausible that Israel is committing genocide in Gaza. The court said Israel must do more to prevent civilian deaths and two, end the blockade of humanitarian aid to Gaza. Almost immediately, Netanyahu, the Prime Minister of Israel, accused about 12 to 14 UNRWA, which is the UN Relief and Works Agency, accused that number of workers in Gaza of working with Hamas in the October 7th massacre of Israelis, which started this most recent conflict. No evidence was provided, but that didn't stop numerous Western governments led by the USA to stop sending all funding to UNRWA, the largest aid organization in Palestine with 13,000 workers. So President Biden is violating, currently violating, the Foreign Assistance Act, which bans military support from going to any nation that restricts the delivery of humanitarian aid, and Israel has been doing this. This is one of the reasons they were, that the International Court of Justice accused them or ruled that they were plausible in committing genocide. The Netanyahu government's failure to immediately and significantly expand human access and organize safe deliveries all over Gaza is in violation of this act. The act states that when a US president is informed of a country blocking the delivery of American humanitarian assistance, then no military aid can be provided. In the past six months of the war, numerous people have come to the Wichita City Council asking the council to pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. A majority of both parties support the call for a ceasefire, some 70% of Americans, the polls tell us, support a ceasefire. So in view of the horrendous famine spreading across Gaza and Israel's blocking of aid deliveries through the border with Israel... of humanitarian aid to Gaza. Almost immediately, Netanyahu, the Prime Minister of Israel, accused about 12 to 14 UNRWA, which is the UN Relief and Works Agency, accused that number of workers in Gaza of working with Hamas in the October 7th massacre of Israelis, which started this most recent conflict. No evidence was provided, but that didn't stop numerous Western governments led by the USA to stop sending all funding to UNRWA, the largest aid organization in Palestine with 13,000 workers. So President Biden is violating, currently violating, the Foreign Assistance Act, which bans military support from going to any nation that restricts the delivery of humanitarian aid, and Israel has been doing this. This is one of the reasons they were, that the International Court of Justice accused them, or ruled that they were plausible in committing genocide. The Netanyahu government's failure to immediately and significantly expand human access and organize safe deliveries all over Gaza is in violation of this act. The act states that when a U.S. president is informed of a country blocking the delivery of American humanitarian assistance, then no military aid can be provided. In the past six months of the war, numerous people have come to the Wichita City Council asking the council to pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. A majority of both parties support the call for a ceasefire, some 70% of Americans, the polls tell us, support a ceasefire. So in view of the horrendous famine spreading across Gaza, and Israel's blocking of aid deliveries through the border with Israel, I ask you, the Wichita City Council, also on that resolution, to please call for the end of U.S. military aid to Israel in accordance with U.S. law.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Yvette Oriana, illegal USA actions supporting genocide in Gaza.
Hi, my name's Yvette Oriana. First time here. I'm just gonna read something. I want y'all just to listen.
Speaker? Can you hear me?
Yes. First time here, so I just want everybody to listen. Hebron massacre, 1929. I'm not sure if I pronounce these correctly. Okay, excuse me. Haifa massacre, 1937. Jerusalem massacre, 1937. Haifa massacre, 1938. Balaa Sheikh massacre, 1939. Hafa massacre, 1947. Abba Sia massacre, 1947. Al-Qisas, excuse me again, massacre, 1947. Ba'Al Amud massacre, 1947. Jerusalem massacre, 1947. Sheikh Barik massacre, 1947. Jaffa massacre, 1948. Tanture massacre, 1948. Deir Yasin massacre, 1948. Khan Yunis massacre, 1956. Jerusalem massacre, 1967. Sabra and Shatila massacre, 1982. Al-Aqsa massacre, 1990. Ibrahim Mosque massacre, 1994. Jenin Refugee Camp, April 2002. Gaza massacre, 2008 to 2009. Gaza massacre, 2012. Gaza massacre, 2014. Gaza massacre, 2018 to 2019. Gaza massacre, 2021. Gaza genocide, as we know, going on today, from 2023 and still going ongoing. Now, don't let anybody convince you that it all started on October 7th. I just read you everything when it started, 1929. So the Palestinians have been enduring massacres for over 75 years. From the hands of the Israelis, the Zionists determine the difference. We are not saying the Jews are bad. It's the Zionists that are not good for our world and the community. They're the ones that are taking and doing the settlers of the land, taking the land. Would you appreciate if somebody came into your home, 2:00 in the morning, banging on your door, telling you to get whatever you can and get out? Whatever you can. And let's say this is your home, from your great-great-great-great-grandmother, dating back to Jesus time. And while you're moving your stuff out, what you can grab, at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, another family's moving in. Not even Jewish descent, they're coming from New York, America, or British. Our tax money is being used over there for all that, and we need to stop. Our tax money needs to be used here for our community. All these schools are being closed for what? Our tax money can provide the schools to stay open. These kids could be crammed into a classroom, not get their education. Let's use our tax money here for our community. Our community. These kids don't got good breakfast and dinner, lunch at school, compared to other countries. Our tax money goes to occupied Palestine, because I'm not going to call it Israel. It is occupied Palestine, because they're occupying Palestine. They ran from another country on a boat, came on a boat with the banner that said, "Please do not do to us what the Germans did to Hitler." And they're doing exactly what was done to them, to the Palestinians, in an open-air prison. Can you imagine your child having to go to a doctor appointment, but you had to go through all these checkpoints? Just to get to a doctor appointment, like, boy, 5 years old, had cancer, and he had to go by himself, not with his mother. He had to leave his mother at the checkpoint. How disgusting is that? God forbid it comes over to America, because what's happening over there, it will come to America. Mark my words, it will. This is not going to be peaceful over there, or never be peaceful. And as we're speaking right now, they're selling real estate property on land that's got blood. Nothing but blood. It is women and children that are dying. It has nothing to do with Hamas. Nothing to do with Hamas, because this has been going on for 70-plus years. Let's keep our tax money here, please, in our community, where it's needed. Where it's needed.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Mayor, speakers four and five have switched spots, so we have William Anderson, Ceasefire
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not going to regale you with more stories about what's happening there. If you don't know it, there's no hope for you, frankly. I want to, rather than regale you with stuff like that, I'm going to ask you each a question. One question, the same question for everybody. Councilmember Tuttle, what are your thoughts on passing a resolution asking for a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza?
This is just a reminder, you have five minutes, and unfortunately, the council will not be speaking until the five minutes.
I'm going to ask each and every one of you in silence's complicity. Councilmember Johnson, what are your thoughts on passing a resolution asking for a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza?
I'll respond after your five minutes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ballard, what are your thoughts on passing a resolution asking for a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza?
I'll respond after your time's up.
Thank you. Mayor Wu, same question. What are your thoughts on passing a resolution asking for a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza?
Again, after five minutes, the council may be able to speak.
I hope you do. Councilmember Glasscock, same question.
I echo my colleagues.
Pardon?
I echo my colleagues.
Okay. Let me ask the question. I want to make sure you heard it. Councilmember Glasscock, what are your thoughts on passing a resolution asking for a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza?
I echo my colleagues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, Councilmember Johnson, same question. What are your thoughts on passing a resolution asking for a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza? That was an out of your head. Okay. Silence is complicity. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hoheisel, what are your thoughts on passing a resolution asking for a humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza?
I'll respond after your comments, sir.
Thank you very much. I have two and a half minutes. I'm going to sit here silently and hope you think about what you're going to say. Free, free Palestine.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bill. Let me answer your question in this way. I can't speak for the body. We don't have a resolution in front of us. But for some time now, I've thought about the words of someone who is loved and celebrated today, but was hated by 80% of America when he was assassinated, and that's Dr. King. He had a speech called "A Time to Break Silence," I actually have it on my desk right now. And in that speech, he not only condemned a protest of the Vietnam War, and I think as American citizens, though many online have emailed us and talked to us about what our job is as elected officials, each of us, over 300 million citizens, are Americans. We all have an opportunity, if we're old enough, to vote, have a say-so in this country in our direction. Therefore, I think each of us has a voice, whether we're local or not. And that means that these issues do matter. We have a presidential election this year, Congress is up, and personally, I think that all of the civilians who've been killed is wrong on either side. I have Israeli friends, I hear their perspective, I have a lot of Palestinian friends as well, and I've seen more from their perspective than what media normally shows you. There are atrocities happening over there, thousands of people dying. I would hope that this administration and others would support a ceasefire. I think all of the death should stop. What we've been seeing is heartbreaking. There's been several NPR reports that really are hurtful to me to see that whole families are being wiped out, and I think that's a tragedy. With that, I am in support of that. If this body does have a resolution, I'll vote for it. Aside from that, I think it's important that, you know, there's always a time to do what's right. History sometimes comes upon us in the moment, we can be silent and watch, or we can take a side. My side is for life, safety. I'm not a fan of war. The last time I spoke about war publicly was at a Ministerial League event, and I took the King approach. I just do not support war in any way, shape, or form. What we are seeing is warlike actions from people with bad intentions, and I'm not in support of that. So for me, again, if a resolution comes before the body, I support it. If it does not, I do support a ceasefire. I will say that publicly. I think that should happen, and I think it's a shame that more humanitarian aid is not getting to the people who need it. That's not right, and I think it's wrong. So I hope I answered your question, but I think Dr. King had it right, and I know that some people see that and may not want to speak, because he was hated after that, he was killed after that. But sometimes you get killed for doing what's right. You only got one shot in life.[1488.13][1488.13](applause)
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, do I hate following Johnson when he's talking. No, I agree with this sentiment. You know, I think an important part of it is also making sure that Israeli hostages get home, and I've seen that from most of the requests that we've had. I'd just like to bring up, the 20-year-olds that are fighting over there now were not even born when 9/11 happened. There's things that we need to look at as far as actually winning hearts and minds, and how we go about doing that, and how we bring people into the fold, instead of doing the same things that we've done for years and years. So yes, I do support something like that. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't like to follow either one of you guys. Bill, I appreciate, Janice, I appreciate you and our other speaker. I appreciate you coming to speak week after week after week. I hear you. I have very similar feelings and sentiments as Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Hoheisel. We have discussed a resolution. If that came before me, I would be supportive, and I do support a ceasefire.
Councilmember Glasscock.
As I said, I would save my comments for afterward. I believe that there's different levels of government, we all have different functions, and I believe we all have different roles and responsibilities, and I don't shy from any question or any direct question from constituents. I would not support a resolution at this point. And so I do appreciate you, but I want to be able to offer you my thoughts and be answering directly to you as well, because you did pose the question, but I would not support a resolution if it came before this body.
And I will answer that question, because I have in my inbox 489 emails for "Vote No" on a ceasefire. While we have public comment every week, where we allow five minutes per individual to come and share their thoughts on any specific item, and we patiently listen for five minutes, we ask for that type of respect for the speaker, as well as respect for the council as well. And I would like to let you know that there are people that sometimes don't come to our city council meetings, but they do reach out to us, whether in person, via email, or simply when we're out in community. And when I hear from individuals on both sides, they keep reminding me, actually, something that is even more pressing. And when we have local issues that we need to take care of, from crime prevention to street maintenance, to things that help move Wichita forward, they ask me to keep a focus on those items. So I will remain thoughtful and listening, but I will also be mindful that I have a focus on taking care of local government with my fellow council members. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear from everybody. Mr. Johnson, he didn't say anything in his title.
Mark Barlow.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Mark Barlow, Flock Cameras in Wichita.
Good evening. Before I get started, I've recently suffered a tremendous personal loss, and it was an effort just to get here this evening. I hope I can rely upon your sympathetic attention, even as I begin to get more heated towards the end. I'm here to talk about the Flock cameras again. Let's just get a few facts out of the way right up front. Flock cameras are purchased using public treasury. Flock cameras are installed on public infrastructure. Wichita police have been trained to protect Flock cameras. The public's movement throughout the metropolitan area is being tracked by Flock. Wichita police refused to release a location map of where the cameras we paid for are. The public is paying taxes to be spied upon. Flock is part of a wider program called Talon, a national program further expanding the reach of warrantless surveillance on a massive scale. According to multiple sources, more than 500 police departments in more than 1,000 cities now have access to Flock camera data. As far as I know, Sedgwick is the only county in Kansas engaged with Flock, but that's bound to change. I've spoken with Wichita PD and Flock in both instances, and in every piece of material I was given when my Cora request went through, great care was taken to have I was given when my Cora request went through, great care was taken to obscure what precisely these license plate readers are actually capable of detecting. According to Flock's own promotional materials, their surveillance cameras detect cars, as well as individuals, animals, and even bicyclists. You don't need to be driving to be tracked, Wichitaans. Congratulations, millions of taxpayer dollars flushed into spying on ourselves. This isn't just criminals that are being tracked, it's all of us. ICT, more like "I see thee." All that data, captured, collated, spun up and stored into some database in Florida, then sold off to the unscrupulous corporate overlord or petty billionaire who wants certain leases with the city are set to expire. Wichita, we have an immediate problem right here at home. Flock's web of surveillance technology is a digital dragnet made up of private cameras purchased with public dollars. We are being fleeced, not only of our taxable incomes, but our rights to privacy. Time and time again, defenders of this program have claimed that Flock helps the police track bad people after they commit heinous acts. Okay, so on a day where nobody gets murdered, or blown away, or abducted, we're just racking up hundreds of millions of personally identifying data points for what? No reason? The violent crime rate in Wichita for 2023 was nine out of 1,000. For every bad guy, there are 991 good guys. Thirty-one murders last year. Presuming each of those crimes happened on different days, that comes out to 334 days last year where nobody got murdered, and yet the Flock cameras were tracking all of us anyways. Why? Citizens can find these invasive, parasitic manifestations of tyranny just about anywhere in our city. Keep your eyes out for rectangular, black solar panels tucked away underneath traffic lights and power poles. Me personally, I've had to repeatedly resist the urge to go on a baseball bat-wielding vigilante camera swatting spree. It's actually a running fantasy of mine. So if I ever really lose it, and y'all start losing cameras, sorry in advance. But that's not the reality I want to live in. I want us to voluntarily stop violating our own rights. I want the people to stand up against more than just Flock and Talon, but the general insistence on hate over love, distrust over unity, and partisan politics over progressivism. Flock, Talon, and the third-party cameras they proliferate are an attack on core American values. They are unjustifiable, unconstitutional, and they are wrong. To those watching who wish to learn more or to get a copy of my camera deployment map, I can be reached at nobodiesnukes@gmail.com or on the Wichita subreddit, just ask for "The Sign of the Times." Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Mr. Barlow, thank you for joining us this evening, and thank you for also engaging in public input as well. I know that you were listed to speak about Flock cameras, so we asked Wichita Police Department for some comments. I know you've had a conversation with them for more than 40 minutes as well, so I'm glad that they took the time to be able to have the conversation with you. For everybody else in the room as well, we have about 160 Flock cameras in Wichita. We have a transparency portal, so if any of you want to write down this, you're welcome to find more information. It's transparency.floksafety.com/Wichita-k s-p d, where you can find more information in addition about how we implement our Flock system. WPD has said that they don't enter personally identifying information, it's not used for traffic information, Flock has no facial recognition capabilities. I know that I have, you know, concerns, larger concerns about Big Brother and being watched as well. I've had conversations with our Wichita Police Department. I'm not concerned with how they're implementing Flock right now, I'd be happy to sit down with you one-on-one as well. But I wanted to make sure to have some talking points tonight, after having a conversation with them, and I know they may have articulated some of those similar points to you as well. But I appreciate you being here. I would also urge you, please don't destroy any of that, that would be a crime. So come and talk to us before, please, destroying any of the cameras. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor, and a show of bipartisanship. I also, like my colleague, am supportive of Flock. I also want to highlight, one of the facts that was mentioned is not accurate, not every Flock camera is paid for and owned by the city. There are neighborhoods that purchase their own cameras, some HOAs as well, that's not city dollars, that's their dollars. They do plug into the system, so it's not every camera. Second, I too have concerns about Big Brother, but Flock has been highly successful here in the city of Wichita. For example, I never made this public, so I won't go into too much detail, but I witnessed a domestic violence situation. After intervening, I made a report about that, and within two minutes, they figured out where this car was going, because the car evaded me. WPD was able to find it shortly later and kind of address that situation. There was another situation I talked about last time, where, again, seeing these license plates and tracking them throughout the city, we're able to recover stolen vehicles, other things, millions of dollars of stolen things have been recovered here in the city. It is working in the way that it was presented. It may sound scary that your license plate gets a picture taken, but honestly, if you're not doing anything, no one is bothering you. And WPD is not bothering you. I know that may not make everyone happy, but this system has been highly effective. Also, when we have folks who have concerns about our car chase policies with WPD, these Flock cameras are a way for officers not to have to speed through the city limits, putting people's lives at risk. We can just follow the cars electronically, figure out where they're going, and WPD can go make an arrest. So the system is probably going to continue to expand to different parts of the city. There have been concerns that they're all in one area, they're not. They are all over, and there are Flock cameras throughout the state of Kansas. Seniors who have memory challenges have been found using Flock cameras in other counties and other cities. So while we all should have concerns about Big Brother, this is a program that is not harmful to our community. And the day that it is, I'll be one of the loudest people speaking against it, but I have not seen evidence of that at this point.
Councilmember Johnston.
Mr. Barlow, thank you for speaking. I would hate to go to a mother and say, "We cannot find your child who's been kidnapped because we don't have Flock cameras." It's happened before, where they have found children that have been kidnapped, for whatever reason, and been able to find them. Same thing with murderers, too. But if you're really worried about Big Brother, I don't know if you carry one of these or not. Okay, then they probably don't follow you, but they're following everybody else. They already know everything about us, they know what we buy, what we say, where we go, what we do.
That sounds pretty belly-up.
So, yeah, thank you. So anyway, thank you again for speaking. I don't agree with you, but thank you.
Councilmember Hoheizl.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we got a full schedule of workshops in the next couple of months, I wonder if maybe we can put something on there at some point to kind of give the public an update as to what the ins and outs of Flock are. I think they should know. Also, I'd like to echo Councilmember Johnston. We have at least two children who have been recovered using Flock. So I got a nice libertarian streak in me, believe it or not, but that one is tough to kind of square that peg, when it can be helpful in recovery of children who have been abducted. And on a personal note, I'm sorry for your loss, and thank you for being here tonight.
And last, I'm going to just reiterate that website, so everyone can look at the Flock Transparency Portal. That is transparency.floksafety.com/Wichita-k s-p d. And there are three points I want to make, so that we have correct information being disseminated in community. This is, again, after speaking with police and as a former reporter who has reported on how Flock has assisted in child abductions. Flock has assisted or been directly used in the location and apprehension of at least 18 homicide suspects. In addition to, any and all searches must have a legitimate law enforcement purpose. This is almost always in the form of a police case number. When one is not readily available, the type of crime and location are used. And finally, Flock data is retained for 30 days. It is stored in an Amazon government web server following the highest government encryption standards. Flock cannot access the data. The data is completely deleted and wiped from the server on a rolling deletion on day 31. It is no longer accessible by anyone.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items 1 through 29. Any comments regarding consent agenda items? Or items to be pulled?
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item 18.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Just to confirm, is that the second reading of ordinances?
Yes, the campaign finance ordinance.
Okay.
Any other items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Johnston first.
Thanks, Mayor. Friendly amendment, Councilmember Johnston to approve the consent agenda items minus item 18.
We have a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Hoheizl, seconds. Any further questions or discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-1. We are now back to agenda item number 18 on the consent agenda.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to ask staff a question, I think this is probably for you, Nate. I've gotten several emails and text messages asking about the foreign part of the ordinance. So if you could just clarify what allowing foreign LLCs to contribute to campaigns, if you could just clarify that?
For sure.
For everybody, that would be great.
Yeah, and it's kind of been used, I think, in different contexts, at the different points in this conversation. So initially, we drafted a proposed ordinance amendment for consideration by council that distinguished between domestic LLCs and corporations and foreign LLCs and corporations. That term "foreign" in this business entity part of the legal world is a lot more about referring to out-of-state corporations. It does refer to corporations or LLCs that are organized under the jurisdiction of another country, but really, when we're talking about business entities, the term "foreign," especially in state law, is really practically talking about out-of-state corporations. And we drafted it that way to try to distinguish between the different types of corporate entities that might be affected by the proposed prohibition on contributions in city elections, and potentially insulate us from legal claims or challenges that might occur afterward. Now, with the second reading version, that is currently before council now, there is not any explicit reference to domestic or foreign corporations and LLCs. It just refers to state law, which maybe provides some clarity in that regard, but brings up the question of how foreign corporations, meaning out-of-country corporations, might relate to contributions in city elections. And so this aspect of it actually is governed by federal statute, which indicates that, and dictates that foreign nationals, that term, foreign nationals, including both people, corporations, other business entities, are prohibited from making contributions, as well as expenditures, in federal, state, and local elections. So there are not many federal laws or statutes that apply to the local level, a lot of them are about federal law. This is a situation, though, where it does apply. And again, foreign nationals, including foreign individuals and foreign out-of-country corporations and other business entities, are prohibited from making contributions under that law. There are a few exceptions, I've probably talked enough on this question, if anybody wants to know what those are, but that's kind of where we're at on that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sure, thanks.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Motion to approve second reading ordinances for March 19, 2024.
Second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts stated in March 18, 2024.
Morning, Mayors. Wow, sorry, good evening, Mayor, seeing council. Used to that too much. Josh Law, Department of Finance, the Board of Bids convened on March 18, 2024. For engineering, we have the golf courses pathway improvements for PPJ Construction Incorporated, for an aggregate bid total of $137,247.25. We have the Delano pathway Osage to exposition for Prito Construction LLC, in the amount of $2,688,993.06. We have the LW Clap Park Bridge improvements, repair and construction of path bridges. For Snodgrass and Sons Construction Company Incorporated, for an aggregate bid total of We have the waterline extension on Southeast Boulevard from Ida to Laura, for Utility Maintenance Contractors LLC, in the amount of $63,419.50. For purchasing, we have the Batteries Automotive and Commercial for Allied Energy and Battery Incorporated, in the amount of $81,640. We have the furnish and install Auto Glass for vehicles and equipment, for North Star Automotive Glass Incorporated, 56% discount off NAG's price list. We have the tree stump removal for Alfred Superior Tree Service Incorporated, and Shawnee Mission Tree Service Incorporated, for the groups listed. We have the network equipment for Branch Library Locations for Localis Incorporated, for $365,249.62. We have the furnish and install New Furniture Patrol East Substation for John A. Marshall Company, in the amount of $255,242.17. We have the LW Clap Park Playground Equipment for AB Creative Incorporated, in the amount of $1,014,561. We have the fiberglass stormwater hinged frames and lids for Virtual Polymer Compounds LLC, for the rates listed. We have flender gearbox for aerator unit for OVO USA LLC, in the amount of $173,182. We have the Wichita Art Museum camera remodel for Sanderford Engineering and Controls Incorporated, in the amount of $239,668.48. We have the Human Resources applicant tracking and management software annual renewal for GovernmentJobs.com Incorporated DBA NeoGov, for $50,563.55. We have the crime intelligence and analysis software Accurate Virtual Crime Center annual renewal for Lexus Nexus, in the amount of $57,413.86. This is how to become a vendor with the city of Wichita. These are open requests for proposals out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try and answer your questions, and that is it.
Councilmember Johnston.
Quick question. On the Clap Park Bridges and Paths, there was such a discrepancy in the bids. They were double each other, all three of them. Do you worry about that, that the contractor can handle that, or clearly understands the focus of what is needed?
I'm so excited you asked, because I told the buyer to check that. And we did have Tim Kelman in Public Works verify that. The vendor, Snodgrass, specifically stated that they are not worried about that work, because it's very straightforward. But I did confirm with them, I see a huge discrepancy on that, are you okay with that? And Snodgrass stated, "There are no concerns, they had full confidence they would achieve the work at that price point."
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
One more question, uh, regarding the Wichita Art Museum cameras. Can you talk about, uh, what that will replace? And are these security cameras also?
Uh, I'm gonna need Public Works, someone help me on that.
Good evening. Here and heading with Public Works and Utilities. Yes. It's just, uh, basically replacing, uh, an outdated, uh, system. Security cameras in, in the network.
Two hundred and thirty, almost two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, I guess, is this a comprehensive look at all the cameras, including the ones with, uh, for the artwork inside? Can you kind of just stand a little bit more?
Right, I think it's the, yeah, I believe it's the entire system, yes. But I can get you more details on that if you'd like, for sure.
Thank you. I see no further questions. It's our motion to approve.
Uh, I would move to take staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven-zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
An ordinance amending section two-point-zero-four-point-zero-zero-five, two-point-zero-four-point-zero-four-zero, and two-point-zero-four-point-two-seven-zero of the code of the City of Wichita pertaining to city council vacancies.
Hi again, everybody. Uh, so what we're focusing on with this one is a bit more the procedure for the council itself. Uh, when there's a vacancy of an unexpired term, what should be the voting process, uh, to fill that vacancy? Uh, currently, city ordinance provides a process to fill that vacancy. That's at code section two-point-o-four-point-o-four-o. And we're talking about unexpired terms if someone has to leave, basically, leave, uh, their position for a variety of reasons, but really, it's any situation, more or less, where the term does not end and we hold a normal, uh, city election. Uh, the process to fill that vacancy involves the remaining council members as well as the district advisory board in the district where the vacancy occurs. Uh, the first level of this includes the DAB holding a public forum that functions as a screening, uh, for candidates. And the current code, uh, directs the DAB to nominate four or five candidates by a majority vote for further consideration by council. Uh, after that DAB nomination, city council elects a new member, uh, to fill the vacancy, again by a majority vote of the council, which would be probably six, uh, remaining members. If majority is not achieved after five ballots, the vacancy process is set for the next two consecutive regular meetings. If majority is not achieved after five ballots at either of those two meetings, um, then the tie is broken by a coin toss. Um, the current process has some limitations, as demonstrated by the December twenty-twenty District Three vacancy process. Uh, during that process, majority was not achieved to fill the vacancy at the first meeting and was only achieved after three votes at the next meeting, which would risk a coin toss potentially. And the tie was between three candidates, which all had different votes. So it's kind of legally complicated how to toss a coin between, uh, three different people with different votes. This is just the same slide. Apologies for the poor editing on my part. Uh, the proposed ordinance, though, would institute a ranked voting process at the DAB and city council levels, uh, to fill vacancies at, at council. This proposed ordinance would also require a written explanation of votes by DAB and council members. The goals of this proposed change would be to facilitate consensus and transparency. It would work in this way. Uh, the DAB would screen candidates to nominate for council consideration, the same sort of thing, a public forum, but would expressly nominate five candidates if five or more are available, rather than four or five, through a ranked voting process. Uh, this ranked voting process is commonly known as the board account method. And I do want to quickly distinguish between this and ranked choice voting, which we presented at the council workshop in October twenty-twenty-two, uh, for the council level of this process. Um, instead of a voting process where each of the remaining candidates is ranked and then the lowest is eliminated until we achieve a majority, this process instead ranks the candidates and points are assigned and then tallied to determine the winner. And this was the DAB level of the presentation in October twenty-twenty-two. So we went through some of this before, but after discussing with Rank the Vote, who has supported, uh, some of this evaluation and research and thinking it through, especially with the number of people voting, which is six, it makes it difficult to achieve a majority of four, risks of ties, things like that. Uh, a board account or ranked voting method is an effective way to achieve consensus. Um, the proposed ranking process would, uh, require DAB members first to each rank the five candidates, one through five. Uh, with each of the first place votes counting as five points, second place votes as four points, third place is three points, fourth place is two, fifth place is one, and zero points for unranked if we have more, uh, than five candidates. And so prepare to hypothetical to try to run through this a little bit and give a, uh, an example of how it might look. Let's assume we've got seven candidates that have filed lawful petitions to fill a council vacancy of an unexpired term. Um, each DAB member would rank their preferred candidates, first through fifth, leaving two candidates unranked. Then the rankings are assigned points, which are tallied to determine the five candidates nominated for council consideration. Now, this chart looks a little confusing, but I think it all comes together relatively, uh, easily. So we've got the seven candidates, A through G up top. And then we're just assuming eight DAB members to kind of demonstrate that sometimes maybe it is difficult to achieve majority when we've got an even number of folks present and other situations, too. So each of the eight, uh, DAB members has ranked five of the candidates with the rank listed next to the points in parentheses. Uh, those points are then tallied below, uh, with the corresponding total rank and total points, with those highlighted as green as the five to move on for further consideration by city council. And again, this looks a little complicated. I will note, as I was thinking about this, this is actually how we used to, um, rank high school forensics, uh, speech and debate tournaments, when you've got, uh, six kids going up against each other and figure out who won among different judges. So, um, this is, you know, I'm not gonna, it, it's not always easy to calculate it all, but it is relatively straightforward and done all the time. Now, those five would go to council, the remaining candidates, um, to vote on five, uh, by the DAB to get one winner. And I provided another example here where the five remaining candidates, A, B, C, E, and G, are there with, uh, districts one through five and the mayor, and my apologies for leaving out District Six, um, but just, I just went by number. Um, so we end up then, um, even though there's, and we can kind of look a little more closely at this, a lot of different, uh, candidates got first place votes. A variety of candidates got last place votes. And that might be difficult to distinguish if we're just going on a bare majority. But in this way, we're able to get gradation between each of the candidates, where there is a first place through fifth place. Um, one other thing I will note, you'll see that, uh, District Four vote for candidate G includes no points. One thing that we did when drafting it was still to leave the authority to council members, uh, members of the governing body, uh, to not rank a candidate that's before them. But I did just want to highlight that for potential consideration by council as well. So in this instance, made it easier on myself, but candidate A emerges after the council vote. But you know, this was different than ranked fourth, uh, at the DAB as well. Um, the proposed ordinance would also institute a written explanation requirement. I just want to keep bringing that up because it's kind of the other, uh, uh, component of this as well. For each vote by DAB and council members, I will note that written explanation is not further defined. And that was intentional when we were drafting it, provide some flexibility to members of DAB and council to decide what they would like to provide as their explanation. Um, a coin toss is still used as a tie for, first, the lowest-ranked nomination of DAB at the DAB level, in case we've got six that end up and there's a tie at five or six. And then also, though, if council does not reach agreement after five votes at multiple meetings, and it's significantly less likely, but there is still an extreme possibility that it might happen, that there's not a clear winner, the two highest-ranked candidates, um, are then determined, uh, are subject to the coin flip with one winner out of those two. Um, I, I will note, too, that we're taking the opportunity, if this is passed, to also reconsider some potentially ambiguous language in chapter two-point-o-four. Uh, the term members-elect is used a couple of times, and we're proposing to remove that in lieu of the term members, to make it clear, uh, who can vote on quorum and who counts as a member at different times. Uh, we also provided some language in the terminology section that just clears up that council is allowed to use different voting systems than majority, uh, when specifically designated. Um, our recommendation and, oh, oh, my apologies. A quick summary again, just to bring all of this together. The proposed ordinance would institute a ranked voting process at both DAB and council levels with a written explanation requirement that addresses some potentially ambiguous language in the relevant sections as well. We're asking for consideration of the proposed amendment, but motion language is available on the green sheet as well. And I will note that Elaine Stephen from Rank the Vote is with me, has provided a lot of support through this process and happy to answer questions, too. So, thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and all your work on this. I went through this process in January eighth of two thousand and nineteen, so I'm keenly aware of it. Could you please go back to slide thirty-two for me?
Sure.
Thank you. So I'm looking at page three of the ordinance, and it says, "In the event of a tie for the, for the fifth candidate, the lowest-ranked candidate nominated, the tie shall be broken by a coin toss." So if it's at the DAB and they have to pass five through, and let's say two of them both have a seventeen or whatever it may be, then there'll be a coin toss between those two and whoever. And that's, so we're still gonna have coin toss in here somewhere, potentially.
Exactly. The, this process will make it much less likely that there are ties.
Okay.
But we need to, we do leave that just in case.
So then my other question I have, and I may have more, but, and if I miss it, I apologize. I tried to read this thoroughly. But the written comment from council, right? So the vote happens at the council meeting. So did the council members provide their written testimony of why they voted for someone after? Or am I missing that somewhere?
It is written to not distinguish the timing.
So it goes to the DAB, right? And then council members come and they give their, I think I had to do a three-minute presentation before council, and then council votes. So does the council then provide their written comments on the five people who presented? Five or, or less, because it could maybe only be three if three people with their name in. When does that written testimony from council member happen?
I don't think that is determined in the ordinance. I think as written, then we could potentially as policy decide when. But we are also happy to clarify, uh, in the ordinance as well, trying to think of all these potential complications of when, uh, a written explanation would be provided. Um, I would think normally, the idea, and again, not to speak too out of turn, and we can adjust things based on the council, would be to vote and provide who wins through the rank and then a written explanation from council members to be more available for the pub, to the public for transparency.
Okay. I, I know in the past, it's been the practice, I know it's not a policy or procedure, but it was the practice that council members did, current council members did not make comment during the appointment process. They just voted. They didn't lobby or, you know, advocate for someone. If that changed and council members could say, you know, "I'm voting for so-and-so because," then it would become written testimony because it would go in the official minutes. So I'm even just wondering if that's a thought. But I, I just wonder about, you know, do you just have to say, "I'm, my written," and I don't want to get you in the weeds, but just something to think about. Is it just, "I voted for Maggie Ballard because," or do you have to provide comments on everybody who actually came before the bench?
That is, I think it's written to be about each person that comes before the bench. Um, as written, it says, "A written explanation with the rank vote consistent with the vote registered." Um, at the same time, it is written to allow some flexibility on what the explanation is. And it doesn't, I, I will say, there's nothing that says that, uh, your vote doesn't count also if there's not a written explanation to tally who wins. Um, but it is supposed to be provided with the vote. Um, and it does, as currently written, it's tied to each of the candidates that is ranked.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm supportive of the ranked voice. I, I think that's great because I, the coin toss from the bench seemed like, you know, not a good idea at all. The written part, to me, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. It's like an afterthought, um, and I'm not sure who would ever, you know, want it or how it would be used. But, um, I, you know, I'm not gonna let perfection get in the way of great, so thank you.
Oh, and appreciate the comments, too, to, yeah, guide us on this.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I, too, echo some concerns, um, that Councilman Tuttle, Tuttle shared as well. Is there any other precedent for any other vote that this body takes where there's a written explanation required?
Not that I'm aware of. Okay, no.
So it's supposed to be a new precedent, okay.
Yes, yes, this is a different thing.
There's the second question to that, too. If the body was to consider the ranked choice voting aspect, we could sever that from the explanation aspect and talk about the merits of those independently and vote on those independently, correct?
Yes, i- if the body wants to. And, uh, yeah, just, it's written to kind of keep those as separate components throughout, so it would just kind of take out the words writ and written explanation at the different pieces of the ordinance when it comes up.
Next question. Is there any other, um, comparable city? Did we do any, any research about how other communities fill vacancies? Is there any city that fills vacancies like this opposed to the process that we fill vacancies currently?
Well, and I can, uh, maybe ask Elaine as well, but a lot of, and apologies for not including that information from the workshop presentation a long time ago. But we did do a lot of, uh, background research on what other cities use. And it is becoming increasingly common for things like filling vacancies, if not general elections. And not ever, I don't want to say it's, you know, a majority or anything like that, but increasingly common to use ranked choice or ranked voting methods to avoid situations where majority is maybe not entirely likely because of the number of people voting. Um, so, and, yeah, I, I'm trying to think back to some of that presentation material, and we're more than happy to share that again, especially because there's different members, uh, of the council. So my apologies for not having that here. But it is increasingly common to fill things like council vacancies or governing body vacancies as opposed to full general elections. Is that?
Hi, uh, hi, Elaine Stephen, District Five, um, and Rank the Vote Kansas. I am not familiar with how other cities, uh, fill vacancies. However, this particular method is ideal because it is designed for when you have a few, very few voters, so in this case, six, and few candidates, so five. Um, this situation, uh, board account is designed to minimize the likelihood of a tie and also take into account the full picture of candidate preference, voter preferences for the candidates.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for all your work on this. I find it interesting that two of the seven members of this body had to go through this process. I went through a special election process on the county side as well. And so this actually happens far more often than people would expect it to.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I went through this process as well. Uh, didn't quite make it to the top five. I think maybe if I wore a money tie, I would have been able to squirt through, but...
Sorry to bring up old ones.
No, no, I don't think it was that much. Well, I'm, I'm here now, so. Uh, quick question about process. Um, are there, having gone through this, are there still gonna be pre-written questions from the city manager's office provided to DAB? Or are they free to kind of ask the questions that they, they see fit?
This ordinance amendment is not intended to affect that part at all. So, uh, the same thing, the question process, uh, from the manager's office would continue in the same sort of way as before.
Okay, they did allow, um, some leniency on that, and I think that's good. It's not where the, the district advisory board can also ask questions that they feel and see on a personal level throughout the district. So I would definitely recommend, um, just giving them some leniency and some leeway to, to kind of ask some of the questions that they're thinking about as well. Um, now, here's, here's the one part I do kind of struggle with here. If it's tied after the first week, you know, if I'm making a, a vote based off of who I think is, you know, I rank them the way I think they should, I don't think it's gonna change from week to week. So, um, I see that there might be some points moving if we do eliminate one or two of the, you know, the fourth and the fifth, and then there might be some points that provide a little bit of discrepancy there. But if, um, we're voting according to how we feel they should, it should be the same week to week to week as opposed to swapping one and two or anything like that. So, um, I know we did talk about this a little bit a lifetime ago, you know, a year and some odd change ago. Um, so what was the reason that we dropped, um, eliminating maybe the fifth place and then the fourth place after consecutive votes, maybe just week to week?
And I'm sorry, could you state the question again? We didn't, uh, change- We didn't change the, the week or the consecutive meetings afterward component.
Right, right. I, I think that what we were talking about is if you're in fifth place after week one, maybe we drop the fifth place now, if there is a tie, so that way points can be distributed a little differently, because that might affect a little further up the ballot.
Yeah, and that, and my apologies. That is a bit more of a ranked choice style voting versus this method we proposed, which is kind of more of a ranked or board account method where you tally the points that are associated with it. And I, I think that it's included to provide, you know, reconsideration at two consecutive meetings after the first vote to potentially allow council to reconsider based on consensus. And at that point, I, I think also if there's a tie, I think the code is kind of written to be, there's not a lot of options necessarily at that point to get past a tie, which is why we are proposing a method that will not risk a tie nearly as often either. But I understand that perspective as well, and if we, if you'd like to, for us to consider potentially changing the way that ties are dealt with, particularly with other meetings, then we're happy to as well. But that piece we didn't change. The piece was just switching from the ranked choice elimination style to more of the cumulative rank board account style.
Yeah, I, I support this. I think this is an improvement over what we have now. I would like to see something a little, I mean, I think it's pretty unlikely that we do have a tie with this new system, but if we could work on possibly looking at a process of elimination from week to week or from vote to vote, just in case, you know, there is a tie, I don't want to go through it. I still see we have a coin toss at the end if it's tied after a couple of votes, so I want to avoid that as much as possible.
Of course. And again, that is definitely the whole point of putting in place the system. There's a very significantly less likelihood of a tie, but again, we don't want a situation where we can't act if there is a tie, basically. Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you, Nate.
But yeah, we can look at that as well, if that, if that's the direction of the body. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Nate, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. I don't like coin flips at all, maybe because I lose them most of the time. Would it be possible if the district advisory board ranked five people, and number five and number six were tied, to just send the top four to the council?
Yes, yes, we can draft it that way for sure. Yeah, that's easy enough to draft in the code. It just, and again, we're happy to take guidance on the tie component. We tried to kind of draft it in a way that would avoid that as much as possible, but understanding that is kind of the tricky part, so we're happy to provide different options on that, for sure.
Thank you. And I do like Councilman Hoheisel's idea of eliminating the, it's not going to, it's usually not going to change from one week to second week to the third week. Eliminating maybe the lower, the lower placers, lowest-placed ones, so maybe, maybe that would change things, or else the vote would just be the same, I think, each, each and every week. Then if it does tie after three weeks, again, I don't like a coin flip, would it be possible to send it back to the district advisory board, have them decide? Because that's who, that's who, that's the people live in the district, representing the people in the district.
That I would need to maybe think about a little bit more, because it's not the governing body deciding who fills the vacancy ultimately, but if that is the direction of the governing body, it's possible that we could draft it. That would be my one concern, because then council's not the one deciding who fills the vacancy, and there might be some other issues, but again, we can definitely look into that as an alternative to the coin toss as well, for sure.
Thank you. And regarding the comments, I worry about things getting personal among candidates. I don't think that's the place for it. We shouldn't make anybody feel bad for throwing their name in the hat, so I'd prefer not to have those. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Great transition right there, Councilmember Johnston. I just wanted to highlight for everyone, the comment piece was my suggestion. I don't think anyone else does that, but it came from the District 3 process. Several members of District 3 questioned why some of us on the governing body at the time voted the way we did. There was accusations of partisanship and all of that, and I thought it would be good if we explained why we supported folks. I'm not tied to that if we want to remove it, that, that's fine, but it was just a way to add to the transparency piece of, if someone wants to know why I support someone, I don't have to be negative about the other candidates, just this is why I supported this person. These are the things I thought were good about them, and I have no problem sharing that, even if it's not in here, because I think it's important for folks to know, but that's, that's all that came from. And again, if, if we don't want to put that in there, I'm fine with that, but that's why it's in there.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Sorry, just one more thought, maybe, maybe two. So I, I appreciate the ranked, the ranked vote at the council, because I think that's where the most opportunity for ties comes in, right? So thank you for being a forward thinker on that. I'm looking back at a screenshot from January 4th of 2019 where the seven candidates who went to the District 2 Advisory Board were ranked, and they were all given a point system, right? And it would be much harder that way, not like a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, but they were, let's see, 544 points, and then the next was 488 points, whatever. That system kind of seemed to work at the DAB, because it would be much less likely, I think, to have a tie that way. This system almost seems more likely to have a tie, so I wonder if it's, and I don't want to make too much sausage from the bench, but almost some sort of a hybrid of just a score like we used to do with the DAB and then do the ranked choice at the, for the council level. So, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
And just to clarify, in the prior example, the DAB members would give maybe like a 1 to 100 score? Is that, is that what it is? Okay, okay.
So there were questions, I think there were, like, I don't know, five questions or how many questions, and then it was a score of like 1 to 20, or, I have it all somewhere in a file, I could find it, but, so I just worry that, at the, I think at the council level, this is a good solution. I just wonder at the DAB level if there's almost more of an opportunity for ties using this system and then having, I just want to stay away from the coin toss. That's my goal.
No, and I think in, oh, my apologies. I think in general, the more gradation we add to the points that are assigned, the less likely that there will be a tie. But under the current ordinance, it is written that it is determined at the DAB level by majority vote. So if we want to change it, we're happy to kind of draft especially the number of points that might be available, and that's relatively easy to change and make it more flexible. But this would, again, decrease the likelihood of a tie by introducing some sort of point system under the ordinance or code, but, yeah, again, the more numbers we have, the less likely, I, I think, a tie in general.
Thank you.
Sure.
I see no further questions for staff, so thank you very much. We will now open it up for public comment. Are there any individuals who'd like to comment? Please come forward, say your name and where you reside or which district you represent.
Hi, I'm Susie Cunningham. I'm from District 6, and I'm a former MAPC commissioner. You said that no other city had to write out comments, but you do have another governing body in Wichita that does, and it may not be the same thing, but it does have a lot of authority, and when a person that's sitting on the MAPC votes to change an ordinance or a zoning law to accommodate any, any development that has to change, which has to do with all the rest of us, they have to give a reason if they vote no. So I think you should give that a little bit more thought. I appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate the, the transparency of knowing why somebody chooses somebody. Now, maybe you don't want to write one up for every single person from the beginning, but I would assume that when you write a little synopsis of what the qualities are of this person, that's not going to change throughout, so maybe you don't have to do it over and over, but if you change your mind and decide this one's not in the running for me anymore, you should be able to relate to us why. That's all. Thank you.
My name's Carl Dennett. I live in District 6. I just thought off the top of my head, if it's a tie instead of a coin flip, you could send those two people for a vote right at the city council. That way it wouldn't be a coin flip, and I don't think you're ever going to end up with a tie anyway. And I'm sitting back there thinking that I'm glad this was never on any of my tests in college, this ranked choice voting. It's all right, thank you.
Elaine Stephen again, with Rank the Vote Kansas. I would like to make clear the difference that this procedure that we're talking about is board account, which is very distinct from ranked choice voting. Board account is where it is a form of preferential voting. You do rank your candidates in order, and then they are assigned points, and the points are tallied up, but, and, and therefore it comes up with a consensus candidate. Ranked choice voting is totally different, and that's the system that is used in Maine, Alaska, and about 60 cities across the country. And just because ranked choice voting is so prevalent across the country, we want to make very clear, board account is recommended for, like we said, small numbers of voters with small numbers of candidates. It would not in any way be appropriate for a general election with the public. Thank you.
I see no further public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Is Mr. Dennett's option a viable option where if you did the board account and there's two, there is a tie of two individuals, then those two individuals would just become before the council?
Yeah, and I think that kind of gets to the idea of, I, I viewed that similar to eliminating candidates for a more narrow consideration. So we can definitely do that kind of narrowing language to maybe break it down a little differently, too, if that's the direction of council at that, yeah.
I prefer the narrowing language, as Councilman Hoheisel said, so we don't get to a place where it is a coin toss. Or if we do, there's a lot of states that do cooler ways to be able to poll it. I think some people polled out of Abraham Lincoln's hat or something, so there might be a better way than just a coin toss. I'm supportive of the aspect of the board account, and I think it's a unique system. I think it makes sense among a body of seven to see if it works among a body of seven. I am not supportive of the written explanation. As we saw in public comment today, even when asked the question, I'm happy to play, provide an explanation about anything, and I think that everybody on council should provide an explanation of how they're voting from the bench, but I think requiring a written explanation, it sets a precedent of every vote, when do we stop with a written explanation of every single vote? I think we should explain our votes to people, and we can do that from the bench, but I will not be supporting the written explanation component. I, I will be supporting the board account explanation, trying to use the right language.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and this is a question to my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it sounds like we're having some robust discussion. I see some consensus regarding the comments, there's some other thoughts. Would there be any appetite to maybe postponing this, just so we can potentially clean it up a little bit? Otherwise, I think there's going to be a whole lot of substitute motions going back and forth, and it might just be an opportunity to make it the best product that we can. So I know this was your work, and so I certainly want to give you an opportunity to comment, but this might be one of those where if we just give it a little bit more time and have legal work on it, and also continue to work with our friends, maybe we can make it the best product we can.
I'm happy to do what the body wants to do on that. The main things I've heard, though, is concern about the comment piece. I think they're, just listening, there may be consensus to remove that, and just some questions about coin toss. I don't want a coin toss either, which is why I was pushing for, for this, but, yeah, whatever the body wants to do, I'm happy to do that. I think we, most of us have said that this seems to be a better process than what we have now, so however the body wants to proceed.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I was going to make a motion unless Councilman Hoheisel has further comments. I can take that off. I will come back.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I'm curious, do we want to strip the comment part today, it passes, and then come back with some cleanups around what happens in case of a tie or maybe the process? Is, is that something that the rest of the body would entertain at this time? Because I, I'm, I mean, I may look, I may be 41, but this job ages you terribly, and I'd hate to, you know, just, something happens in the next two weeks or so, and you guys will be stuck flipping the coin, so, so, yeah, I, I think if we can do that, just remove the language and pass this today, and then we can come back here in a couple of weeks and kind of clean up some of the other stuff, but if that's the will of the board, the body.
Before I go to Councilmember Glasscock, can I ask staff if that is a possibility to clean this up first, before it actually comes to a vote?
Mayor, I will say you can do this, yes. You can today move to strip the language regarding written comments, and then before second reading, we can have a new clean version that incorporates what we believe we're hearing today, and we could put that second reading on next week, or we could delay second reading for a couple of weeks to give us maybe time to really get that cleaned up effectively. Just a thought.
Thank you. Councilmember Glasscock.
So let me see if I do this correct. So I would move that, should I, Councilman Johnson? You're always better at making sausage from the bench, so do you want to do it? Okay. So I would recommend that the city council table the, this ordinance, no, it wouldn't be, okay, never mind. You already messed it up.
We want to, if you want to defer, we defer, but we don't want to table.
Okay, defer. So I would move that the city council defer the ordinance in many sections, 2.04, 0.005, 2.040, 40, and 2.0427 of the code of the city Wichita pertaining to city council vacancies, with the understanding to have staff draft, draft an ordinance that would eliminate the tie-breaking component by a coin toss and remove the language regarding a written explanation to our meeting on April 2nd.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Woo-hoo.
Motion passes, 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County.
Bob Leighton, City Manager, Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to talk tonight about Child Advocacy Center and an expansion project that the center is planning. Back in 2015, the city council approved $250,000 for the Child Advocacy Center, I'm going to refer to it as CAC going forward, to move from the Finney State Office Building into more space to help better accommodate their mission in what was previously known as the Lincoln Elementary School. The CAC houses community agencies that provide services to children who are survivors of abuse and neglect. The, some of the programs or services they offer include advocacy, mental health services, case coordination, community education, administrative support, and they also provide a facility for partner agencies. The, each cli, each client or child that is, that goes through the program is assigned a child family advocate who assists with questions, referrals, crisis intervention, support and referrals, all free of charge. As I'm sure you're aware, the pandemic, the COVID pandemic, had a significant impact on families and especially on children, and the CAC saw a sharp increase in the, both the number and severity of cases post-COVID. In 2021, the number of clients served increased by over 1,000 to almost 5,000 annually, and then in '22, the, they still stayed ahead of the pre-COVID numbers and had about 4,500 clients. As you can imagine, this has put a lot of pressure on the staff and on the facility to be able to accommodate the needs of the community. to be able to accommodate the needs of the community. The impact of mistreatment or maltreatment of a child is significant from even, for many reasons, of course, but if you want to put it in financial terms, if we lose a child due to maltreatment, the cost, lifetime cost for that child's loss or death is $16.6 million. The lifetime additional healthcare cost for every child that survives maltreatment is over $800,000, and the annual cost for abused and neglecting children in the United States averages 60, almost $64,000. The direct costs that were used in those calculations include investigation, criminal justice, mental health expenses, special education needs, and disability support. You can imagine victims are more likely, as adults, to be unhoused, unemployed, and have increased involvement in our criminal justice system. To help remedy the problems that have been created post-pandemic, Child Advocacy Center has proposed a 37,000 square foot expansion to create additional interview rooms, private family rooms, therapy offices, and group therapy space. The interview rooms would be used by the law enforcement partners that are housed in the center, as well as for child protection specialists. The cost of the project is estimated to be $12.8 million. Terms of the ask of the city, the Child Advocacy Center leadership asked if the city would consider making a contribution of $2 million towards the expansion project. We are fortunate in that the council allocated $20 million in ARPA funds previously, and also included in your current operating budget, $20 million for community initiatives. And not all of that money has been committed or spent at this point. Therefore, it's recommended that 2 million of the ARPA funds that are set aside for those initiatives be allocated for the CAC expansion. To date, the center has collected pledges of 4.0, almost $4.4 million for the expansion project, with the city's contribution then taking them to almost 6.4. The Law Department has prepared a contract for the expansion project since we're using ARPA funds. It's a fairly detailed agreement that spells out all of the ARPA requirements that the city contains in its allocations or requires for its allocation. So the recommended action is the city council approve the subrecipient agreement with the Child Advocacy Center, authorize the ARPA project budget, authorize the necessary signatures, and authorize staff to approve future budget revisions within the agreement's budget categories. I'd be glad to answer any questions. There are also representatives from the center that I know would be glad to talk more about the project.
I will start off. We would like the opportunity for the folks at the CAC theater to, sorry, CAC Center to talk to us about this project.
Good evening. It's a delight to be here with you. Thank you so very much for your time. This is obviously a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to continue to meet the needs of children within our community. We really thought when we moved into the former Lincoln Elementary School building in 2016 that we had anticipated growth that would outlive my stay anyway there, and have found ourselves in a situation that is both wonderful and difficult. Wonderful in the fact that we're able to provide the services that are needed to children within our community and their family members, but difficult in the fact that we know that child abuse is not going away. I think that that kind of carries a double-edged sword in many of our views. Does that really mean that we have more violence in our community, or does that really mean that more children are coming forward with reports of abuse? And I don't know that we'll ever have the true answer to that. My opinion is as long as the numbers remain somewhat similar or increasing, I know that we're doing our jobs by raising awareness, empowering people to come forward when there is a concern for abuse, and being able to address the needs that they specifically have when they come to us. So our advocacy program, our therapy, our case coordination, and ongoing education are instrumental components to the health and safety of our children. And as we have the opportunity to work with our partner agencies that are co-located in our facility, we know that we're making a difference on a daily basis, and we have the delight and the opportunity to really see that impact on a daily basis when children walk out with their heads held high. And we've known that we've made an impact in regards to their safety and their future. So thank you again for this consideration. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you again for giving me a tour of the CAC, and I really appreciated the separation between a child and their alleged perpetrator. So the building is set up so that the child will not have to see their alleged perpetrator. So again, I appreciated that, and I also appreciate that you have come forward to tell us the need in our community.
Absolutely.
I see no further questions from the bench, so we'll open it up to public comment at this time. Anyone from the public who would like to speak? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you for being here today. I really appreciate it, and I requested some information on return and investment, and you sent me everything that I requested. It was all done very well, and so I'm not going to, I was planning on highlighting some of it, but it was great in the PowerPoint. I used to be a school counselor, so I was a mandatory reporter. I'm a proud member of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention. As mentioned in our staff analysis during COVID, one of the things that I worried the most about was the lack of children being in schools to be able to be monitored and potentially reporting. So this is something that's near and dear to my heart. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the work that you do, respect the work that you do. I could not do the work that you do. So thank you for stepping up and taking care of our most vulnerable. This may be one of the votes that I'm most proud of while I serve on city council, so good luck to you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank you guys for being here. You guys do incredible work, and I'm excited that we're able to help you guys expand your mission to help more children.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is a personal topic with me as well. This is in my district. Lincoln was actually, I attended their elementary school for a year, so when I got the tour, I knew automatically where the principal's office was. Big surprise. But it was very striking to see just the things that the children have to go through and the services that you provide, and the jobs that you guys are over there doing, because Lord knows, it's just one of the most difficult things to see day in and day out. So my heart goes out to you guys. Thank you so much for everything you do. And this is, Councilmember Tuttle has said it quite often, that you look at your budget and you see where your morals are. And so this is definitely a great thing that we're able to support you in this endeavor. So thank you guys for everything that you do.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to say thank you very much for the work you do. It's tough work. Work that's very much needed. I really just appreciate all the work you do. Thank you.
I see no further comments. This does reside in Councilmember Hoheisel's district.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pleasure here. I've moved that the city council approve the subrecipient agreement with the Child Advocacy Center, authorize the ARPA project budget, authorize the necessary signatures, and authorize staff to approve future budget revisions within the agreement's budget categories.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
North Industrial Corridor Contamination Site Project, Groundwater Monitoring Professional Services Contract.
Good evening, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you includes a contract for professional services for routine groundwater monitoring services in the North Industrial Corridor remediation site. The North Industrial Corridor, or NIC, project area encompasses roughly 4,000 acres in an area from about 2nd Street to 37th Street North, and from the Canal Route West to Waco Street at its widest extent on the south end. It includes multiple commingled plumes of volatile organic contamination that was a result of historic industrial processes and activities in the area. Over time, the city manages remediation according to KDHE settlement agreement. There's an agreement between KDHE and the city that lay out the processes and procedures and the things that we have to do. The site-wide groundwater monitoring is a routine part of that agreement. In addition to cleaning up the groundwater, additional public protection has been provided. This has included extensive indoor air studies that were conducted in 2001, 2010, 2012, and 2014. And according to the studies in KDHE's analysis, it was determined that there are no health concerns with vapor intrusion from the groundwater contamination into buildings. In addition to that, the city's water well ordinance and inspection program provides additional controls in the area. For instance, no drinking water wells are allowed within the NIC site. Permits are required for lawn and garden wells before they're constructed. There's a follow-up inspection that takes place after the wells are drilled, and then prior to any title transfer that includes a well, there's an inspection that's required for that as well, and staff distributes informational packets as part of that program to well owners. Active groundwater cleanup efforts and monitoring began in the 1990s. This included the beginning of cleanup for roughly two dozen active sources. The city is responsible for the down gradient cleanup downstream of the sources, and completed construction of the active remediation system in 2021. The active remediation efforts are projected to be completed by 2036, when the extraction wells are anticipated to be shut down, with monitoring proceeding through 2048. The scope of the contract includes four sampling events in 2024 and 2025. That's a total of four events, semi-annual events for water levels, as well as samples that will be analyzed to determine the concentration of the contaminants. The reporting services will be provided under the contract according to the KDHE-approved plan, and then monitoring well maintenance services may be provided at the discretion of staff. For instance, if the service provider finds that one of the monitoring wells has been damaged, they'll have the resources to make those repairs if staff gives them the go-ahead to do that. Procurement included four proposals that were received. Two companies were interviewed by the Staff Screening and Selection Committee. SCS engineers were selected based upon their experience, schedule, and pricing. The contract price includes a not-to-exceed price of $289,680, which was below the engineer's estimate. Funding for this project is included in the approved North Industrial Corridor operating budget. Therefore, staff recommends that city council approve the contract for NIC groundwater monitoring services, authorize the necessary signatures, and approve any necessary budget adjustments. I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for staff? I see none. Thank you. We will open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Celestra Sett, Wichita native. I've always wondered about this North Industrial Corridor because it's one of only two decremental tiffs that the city of Wichita has. So here's my question. I've never got this answered, but I've always worried about groundwater contamination. I've talked about it before. How do we get the results of the well testing by these engineers? Can I do a CORA? Is it posted anywhere? Obviously, we're hiring these engineers to clean up this contaminated area, so if someone's interested, how would we get the results to see how many contaminants are currently in the water and how that improves under the terms of this contract? Thank you.
The reports that are filed with KDHE are available for public information via the KDHE website, and I believe we do have links on the city's website as well. Anyone that would like to have that information is welcome to request it and go through the process with CORA. We could do that as well.
Can you please send me that link in case community members will ask for follow-up? I can forward that information on.
We can do that.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, Don, how often is that updated? How often do we get reports on the current levels?
The, I don't know that we have the work scheduled yet, but there will be two sampling events this year, and the information will be available as soon as the report is approved by KDHE and published, and the same for 2025. As soon as we know what those schedules are, we can provide you with that information.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to encourage anybody who is watching to truly look at that map and consider if you find someone who knows how to drill a well, and they are looking to do that without getting a permit, to not do that. Please go through the process. Groundwater is contaminated, especially over in the 29th and Grove site. I have been hearing of the folks having wells dug. Just want to continue to encourage people not to do that. You should not have long contact with some of the groundwater because of TCE, and anytime I can encourage people to not do that, I want to. Yes, there are people out there who know how to drill wells. Do not use those folks. Please get a permit, and more, most importantly, do not drill wells in the contaminated area so that you are not exposed to contaminated water. And especially in that area, there are cancer rates that are twice that of the county, three times that of the state. It is dangerous, so use the city water. Yes, it does cost some money, but it is safe for you.
I see no further questions or comments from the council. This resides in both Councilmember Johnston and Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
I'd like to take staff's recommended action that the city council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Application.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you this evening is a request for submission of a climate pollution reduction grant application. This grant program is a competitive grant competition from the EPA that funds projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and harmful air pollution, especially in disadvantaged communities. Project ideas were first submitted to KDHE in December of last year for inclusion in Kansas's Priority Climate Action Plan. Only projects included in that plan are eligible to apply for the grant. Five projects were sourced from multiple departments, including Public Works, Parks, Library, and Transit, for total funding requests, just over $17 million for five years. Staff worked closely with other departments and our internal environmental team. Ultimately, the Sustainability Integration Board approved these projects at their February 2024 meeting. Focus was for implementation, funding for near shovel-ready projects. That was something that was brought to our attention to find projects that could be brought to a point of construction soon. The application deadline is April of this year. EPA anticipates announcing awards this summer. This is a highly competitive grant with submissions expected from across the country. Quick look at the proposed projects, just over $750,000 for city building audits and improvements. This includes an energy efficiency audit of 18 buildings, which includes rec and community centers, park shelters, and the city arts building, ultimately to find ways to lower energy costs long term. Next project is for purchase of four new electric vehicles for use by libraries and parks, and to install and operate up to 16 public charging stations at some of the city's libraries, cultural centers, and rec centers. Another project is just under $9 million for enhancements to the Red Bud Trail. Pedestrian Bridge is a project that council has heard about recently. Pedestrian Bridge is a project that council has heard about recently. This would include upgrading three proposed street-grade crossings to pedestrian bridges, which should increase trail usage, improve safety, and reduce traffic congestion. These are located at Woodlawn Web and Greenwich, and the trail is effectively along 17th Street along the old Frisco Rail Corridor. These are considered areas of high traffic stress by WAMPO. Talk about that real quick. This map, if you see the yellow X's, is where the Red Bud Trail is at, between 13th and 21st Street. The one to the left is Woodlawn. Rock Road is the one without the yellow X. The plans already include a pedestrian bridge at that location because of the significantly high traffic counts at Rock Road, and then Web and Greenwich. And what this does, I mentioned, so they analyze traffic counts, speed limits, and other conflict factors. Overall, to improve air quality from reduced vehicle idling, because they won't have to stop for anybody crossing there. Possible reduction in car travel so that people will be more inclined to use the path. Leads to more recreation and ultimately a reduction in carbon. So to probably improve safety and greater usage for the path, and again, help with the air quality. Next project then is for some solar pilot projects. Almost $3.9 million would include installation of solar panels at the hub, the multimodal facility that will be going out for bid soon that the council approved funding for this evening. The final funding for, this would also, so that project for the hub would provide 30% of facility energy needs and all of the energy needs for electric vehicle charging at the facility. This project, this portion of the project was also performed and audited at city buildings to identify the best locations for future solar and to install the same at three city buildings. We're working closely with every G on this to look at capacity of the grid in certain areas to make sure they could accommodate what's being recommended. Last project is almost $2.3 million for tree canopy expansion, providing funding for the purchase, planning, and maintenance of 2,600 new trees to be planted in 17 areas and that have been identified as suffering from heat island effects. This would also include some level of public tree planting and giveaway events. Each of these projects will include educational elements to inform the public on ways to both save money and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Total funding request, again, is just over $17 million over five years. There is no match requirement for this grant funding from the city. Three new FTEs would be funded also by the grant to oversee implementation, lessening the burden on existing staff. Staff recommends city council approve the CPRG application, authorize staff to make necessary budget adjustments based on the final award amount, authorize staff to reallocate funds between projects as necessary, and authorize the necessary signatures. So in the event that this funding is awarded, we would certainly, and it could be at some other level, which is what we see on quite a few of these grants. It's a pretty big ask, right? So we would expect that there could be a possibility that there would be a lesser grant awarded. If need be, we'd come back to the council at that point to talk about prioritizing where that funding needs to go. If you have to stand for any questions.
Councilmember Glasscock.
A few questions regarding the sustainability of the grant. First off, number three, so number one, items number one, number two, and number five, or sorry, one, two, and four seem that they would be able to be completed during the proposed distinction of the grant. Options number three and options number five seem that they would perhaps go out of the five term or a five-year term of the grant because planting 2,600 trees seems like a heavy ask during that time. And also, the construction of three bridges seems like a heavy ask during a five-year period. Do we believe both of those projects could be completed during the five-year grant application?
We do. The Red Bud Path Project, those bridges will be all completed during the period of time for that project, which is scheduled over the next five years. I know in working with our park department on what their plan is for annual trees, they said they'd find a way to make it work. So yes, we believe it can fit within the five years.
So we don't have any worry that the sustainability of these three positions would extend beyond the five-year length of agreement as from the grant process?
We do not at this time.
Okay. Another question, and this would be a question slash comment about the installation, so item number four, the installation of the solar energy system at the Delano Multimodal Center. Great, love that. And also looking at other city buildings, installations of those on the buildings. I would also ask staff if we could look at installation on parcels of land that we have as well. I know the Old Brooks landfill might have capacity. It's near the Buffalo Flats interconnect. And so there might be options aside from just buildings if there is arrays that could produce more comprehensive energy more long-term as well.
I appreciate that. We'll make that part of the consideration, sure.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Gary, for your work on this. Just two quick questions. How competitive do we expect this grant to be? I mean, I see there's quite a bit of money that they're looking to give away. Do you think most of the applicants will receive something?
Not necessarily. It's kind of hard to compare what happens on the federal level. When you look at the bipartisan infrastructure law and over $1 trillion of what's happened for the last three years, and we've been fortunate to receive a few grants, but there's some of these grants. What we were told is there's an expectation that there could be an award of maybe up to 100 grants. But with this being across the country, there could be thousands of, easily thousands of applications at different levels. And then maybe I shouldn't say thousands, but there will be a lot more applications than there is awards, which we see on all these types of grants are highly competitive. What helps with these types of grants is support at state and federal level, right, as the application goes in. What we would hope for is some level, right? And I think that's what we would push for is we're asking for a lot, I think, hoping that we get some part of it.
Okay. And then that leads me to the second one. You kind of alluded to it might come back, and we just have an adjusted amount that we actually receive from the grant. Do they look at it and tell us what projects possibly that they think there's, that would be appropriate for them to offer the grant for? So are they going to give us some feedback, like, don't do this one, but do this one?
I think it's probably a little bit of both, all of the above. These, and I assume this program is the same, that there's generally are multiple years. So even if the opportunity isn't there to begin with, we usually get feedback. But you explain that well, and that's typically what we've seen in these. They may be willing to award in one area, but they may want to change something with that. So we're open to discuss any of those parts with them.
All right. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. I am extremely appreciative for all your staff does and then adding something like this in addition. I think it was slide 66 is where you talk about the electric vehicle stations. Just curious if, oh, yeah, thank you. And I think it's going to be like 16 different public stations, and it'll be at our facilities, correct? But I wondered if there, WAMPO has Electric Vehicle Charging Station Task Force, and then also, I think, has done some evaluation and community input and just hopeful that there's some coordination with WAMPO and when we're selecting these sites, because some of our sites might be sites that they have identified. So then that means that, you know, the funding that they receive for this could be allocated for somewhere else? Is that helpful?
Absolutely. I agree, and I appreciate you mentioning that, and we would certainly want to do that because of that effort that's happening through WAMPO, the discussions, as you obviously know that we've had, we need to stay in very close collaboration.
And then I just want to, and I know councilmember Glasscock asked it, but I just want to make sure I understand the answer. So there's three new staff positions that would be added during the five-year period of this grant. What would happen to those staff positions at the completion of this five-year funding?
Well, it's a really good question. And we talked about that too, but I mean, it's, we would have to determine at that point. The one thing I would tell you is we would not have to accept that part of it. The offer is there. It kind of depends on where we end up. I don't think there's much of a chance that we're going to get $17 million here. And so it's, I think it's probable that whatever the award would be, we probably could handle it with staff and maybe not take on that risk. It's nice to have staff funded, but at some point in time, we probably won't be able to keep them, right?
And then this is just a comment. I hope the Red Bud is done in five years.
We do, too.
That's certainly our goal. I was part of our federal legislation. I know that between WAMPO and putting in the CIP in this, we have lots of different opportunities to try and make that project come to fruition. But thank you for all you do. I appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Gary. Now I'm going to ask about the trees. I'm very excited about this, number one, because it's a giant grant, but also all of the different areas that is covering solar, trees, the pedestrian bridges and all that. So, but my question is, do you have any idea on, you know, like some of our other tree initiatives have been the heat islands? Is there like a game plan for, I know you said some of these might be to pass out to the community, but do you guys have like a project in mind or for the trees or do you know?
So on the, for the 2,600 trees, we've got 17 tracts, if you will, identified that were part of the
The heat islands.
Results of the NASA study, the heat islands, very specifically. Park has a really good bead on this because they've already got their program in place, their annual funding that's already got trees going in those areas, right? This would help enhance that and provide additional trees. So I think that, and it's a little bit hard to see on this map, but those tracts are identified.
But it is working cohesively with NASA.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. That's what I wanted to know.
And that's where that information comes from. It is. Right now, the plan is to look at 150 trees to be given out at public events for, with people to plant on their own property. And, you know, I think there's probably some flexibility in that, too, but it's a good place to start.
And I appreciate the questions from the other councilmembers about the three full-time positions, but I'm going to advocate for the positions to water the trees because, you know, we have to take care of them after.
And you know what? That's a great point. It kind of depends on what part would come out of this, if anything. It may make more sense on something than another, sure.
Anyway, thank you.
I see no further questions for staff. Thank you. It is now time for public comment. Any comments? Please come forward with your name and the district you live in.
Andrew Crane, District Five. And I wanted to mention that you guys did mention in there about transit. Hopefully, you guys are thinking about the Transit Mobile Center and that. So that better be included because transit needs help, big time. Thank you.
I see no further public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
I'm leaning in support of the application process. I do have concerns about the three full-time positions and just the continuation of that after five years. I know that should be a conversation for later. Again, only been here three months, so I'm sure that processes. Bob, can you calm my fears regarding that?
Mayor, councilmember, yes, I can. I, would, this is a, if you, the way this grant is structured, it's on a project basis. So I would not anticipate that the three positions would be continued past the grant period or that any positions created in support of the grant would be continued unless the council were to adopt some type of plan going forward where those positions could be utilized. For instance, if you developed some kind of energy conservation sustainability plan, something like that that goes beyond what we have today, those positions may have the right expertise then to help implement that plan. But again, because this is project-specific, I do not anticipate that positions would be continued past the grant.
Thank you. That does help calm some of my fears. My only additional comment to that would be I want the public to know that there's no match requirement from the city for this. This is federal funds. The feds do need to make sure that they are cutting expenses and not adding $4 billion with this project. That's about $102,000 of a tax burden or a debt burden per citizen in the country. So while the federal government still has runaway spending, I would support some of that coming to Wichita until they can solve it at the national level.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to speak to councilmember Dalton's concerns, one of the things that we find particularly difficult with planting trees is the actual maintaining them, getting them to a two-year or three-year age where they can kind of take off on their own. So I think that's part of the grant here is that we would plant the trees and then for a period of time have the manpower to actually maintain and water them. I know that's something our park staff, they're overworked right now. So I know that they would appreciate probably having a couple of extra staff members to help get our tree project off the ground. So I wouldn't foresee it necessarily extending beyond the period of the actual grant.
You know, further questions or comments from the bench? Is there someone that would like, oh, councilmember Glasscock?
With a motion to approve. I move that we approve the SPRG application, authorize staff to make the necessary budget adjustments based on the final award amount, authorize the staff to allocate funds if the project's necessary, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Any further discussion? I see none. And again, this is the CPRG. I heard the comment. We have a motion and a second, and no more discussion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. I'm going to use my point of privilege at this moment. We have been in session for nearly two and a half hours. I will request a 10-minute break so we can move, and we will come back in 10 minutes. Oh, I know, I know.
Funding for improvements to the Manissa Bridge of the Little Arkansas River.
Good evening. Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you is funding for improvements to the Manissa Bridge over the Little Arkansas River. The Federal Highway Administration and the Kansas Department of Transportation require the structural inventory and appraisal of all bridges maintained by the city of Wichita to be completed on a bi-annual basis. The most recent bridge inspections for the Manissa Bridge, completed in 2019 and 2021, identified some depression in the surface, brick driving surface, as well as the inspections also identified sidewalk areas, hand railing, bridge columns, and lighting that need repairs. This is a map showing some of the areas identified. The brick driving surface repair in multiple locations on the bridge, light fixture repairs, sidewalk repair along the northeast corner, handrails and columns, sidewalk support repair underneath side of the bridge, as well as some bank erosion. The pictures before you show some of the, the photos that were taken during the bridge inspection. The picture on the left is, shows some of the depression of the brick area on the driving surface. The middle picture shows some of the sidewalk that has settled as it approaches the bridge. And then the picture on the right shows the sidewalk support with cracking and spalling of, of concrete. If approved this evening, we will hire a consultant to evaluate the bridge further and determine necessary repairs. Plans will develop, will be developed accordingly to make the repairs. Regarding financial considerations, the adopted 2024 through 2033 capital improvement program includes $1 million in 2024 for funding of bridge rehabilitation and repair. Staff recommends initiating the full amount for design, project oversight, and repair of the bridge elements. It is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Councilmember Glasgow.
This is just a quick question. It says it was rehabilitated 15 years ago. How often do we rehabilitate our bridges?
You know, it, that kind of depends on the bridge inspections, but this one's mostly just cosmetic. So I think we're, you know, to the point. As it is right now, again, the inspections that have been done recently, we don't have the 2023 report yet, but you can see some of the minor items.
Awesome. Thanks, Paul.
I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment. If you have a comment, you can come up.
Hi, I'm Susie Cunningham. I'm with the Little Arkansas Community Coalition, and we've been working on trying to get this bridge repaired for quite a while, or at least a systematic maintenance to preserve the artwork. Really in favor of spending money on the bridge. However, I'm a little taken aback that the slideshow shows nothing about the artwork, which is unique to this area. It is on the historic, the local historic registry. In last February, it was accepted to be, it, it was certified to be eligible for the National Historic Registry. It's the only bridge in the country that uses carthelite. There are places in, in this bridge where the mortar's gone. You can, you can slide your whole hand in there. And that means water is filtrating behind those, those art reliefs, those, those little balusters with the, with the buffaloes on them are filling, they fill with water. They get some, they get a haze of, of mineral on them. You can see, just like in a basement where you see the water, you see water seeping through them just because it's not pointed and tucked on a regular basis. Preservation mortar is softer than regular mortar. And that, that's so that it can be removed easily and, and the monuments replaced in case of an accident or settling. In 2019, I contacted my council member at the time, and I talked about, and I came here and I went to the dabs. I talked about a crack that formed on the sub, the substructure of the southwest corner that had started at the ground and gone up the bridge abutment. It went clear through the monument, through the Native American Indian, up through his head, and, and snapped his nose right off, and it has been that way since 2019. So I know that the structure of the bridge is important. And I know that, I know from living there and living on the river my whole life, that the velocity of the, of the floods are very intense. And until the summer of 2022, there wasn't any maintenance on picking up the big wood debris that piled up on the pylons. They were tall, and of course, I don't know how far up they were compared to how far below. But they were probably deeper than they were high. And that causes a lot of scouring and a lot of substructure damage. So I encourage you to please vote for this. But I don't want it to be, I don't want the artwork to be a, well, if money allows, attitude because that's what happened last time. A lot of people, a lot of you weren't here. When that multimillion-dollar partnership between the state and the city happened, a lot of the repair needed on the, on the artwork was incomplete by 2009. Started in 2007, and I think the last report went out on 2009 with a punch list of things that didn't get done. So I want to make sure that we catch this up because deferred maintenance is really not fiscally sound idea. We know that it's going to cost a lot of money. Now, maybe down, down the way, we can help get some grant money because I'm pretty sure it's going to, going to be on the National Historic Registry. That, that application is in the works. It's almost done. So that's all. I just want to make sure that, that you know that we support this, this process and this proposal. But we would like a little more emphasis on saving the carthelite. I guess that's all. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you. Paul or Gary, can either of you speak to any of the, the art portion of this bridge? Are we just focusing on the structure? Or will there be any type of catch-up on the artwork?
We will do both, and that's what we want to get a consultant on board for. We want to do both so we can get, and that's what part of the plan would be, would be to get a consultant on board to further look at some of that. And any of the art components attached to the walkway, you know, we would restore those using repairs that we have previously done when we rehabilitated the bridge 15 years ago. So yes, we want to get a consultant on board and look at these elements as well as we go through the design.
Okay. And assuming, or if this passes, do you have any idea when you guys would hire a consultant and like what a timeline looks like?
We would. If this passes this evening, then we would make the, we would write the request for proposals to get a consultant on board as soon as we could.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Any further public comment?
Hello. My name is Beth Harshfield. And Harshfield Holdings, we have several properties in Wichita and in Riverside area. And I'm concerned about the parks as a whole. I think the bridge is very important, but I go to the parks all the time, and it seems like there isn't, I mean, we're talking about all these trees. I didn't see parks written anywhere in that, maybe because they're not a heat island. But anyway, I don't want our parks to get into disrepair, so we have to hire consultants to come in and do that. I think if we had a new mentality or more people working for the parks, maybe the dead limbs, the trash, the dirt, the, anyway. It's, it's a sad state. I invite you all to come to Riverside Parks some noon. But I wanted to read something from my friend Madeline, who had to go leave to get her son. She says, "In 1979, Manissa Bridge was added to the Wichita Historic Registry. In 2007, the city spent millions on a repair which Susie was talking about. And then Susie started reporting damage. Nothing was done. We're not only interested in another repair, but in much-needed repair, but funding for maintenance." And she also mentions that we are so proud of this bridge that we have a lot, a display in the lobby talking about how everybody brought their old glassware so that we could repair it, but we don't maintain it. I think it's very important to maintain what we have so that people want to come to the city. People want to go to the parks. Anyway, thank you very much. And I do hope that you approve this amount.
Councilmember Glasgow.
Ma'am, just a brief comment. I know from this bench, we've had conversations about deferred maintenance for our park facilities and making sure that we're maintaining those. And so I know that's a priority of this council and something that we've talked about pretty often from this bench. So thank you for bringing that up.
Any further public comments? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I see none. This resides in Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take staff's recommended action, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Wastewater Treatment Plant Two Grit Channel Repair.
For the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you at the moment would approve funding to carry out necessary repairs at wastewater plant number two. Plant two is the city, is the city's largest sewer treatment plant. It's located near 57th Street South and Hydralic in District Three. The plant processes approximately 30 million gallons of wastewater daily. Grit removal at the plant's headworks is necessary to protect pumps and other sensitive treatment equipment. Grit is just what the word says. It's gravel, coarse sands, other hard materials that make its way into our collection system and down to the plant. It's necessary to screen that out at the headworks and to It's necessary to screen that out at the headworks and dispose of it. And then the grit channels actually direct effluent on, or influent on into the treatment process. The channels are more than 20 years old, and the concrete floors and walls are beginning to deteriorate and they're in need of repair. This is extensive damage that's due to the highly corrosive environment in which they operate. And repair the concrete channels and application of corrosion-resistant linings is necessary at this time. The adopted 2024 through 2033 capital improvement program includes $13,900,000 in funding for wastewater treatment plant improvements. Staff requests initiation of $300,000 for design, construction, and city oversight of the project. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Thanks, Don. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Don, for the presentation and all your work on this project. Is this going to happen concurrently with the BNR project?
It will. It'll dovetail nicely. It's not going to interfere with that. And there actually could be some benefits to carrying those out at the same time with the way that we direct flows and do other things.
Okay, appreciate it.
I see no further questions? Thank you. Any comments from the public? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I see none. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I recommend that the city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Quarterly financial reports for the year ended December 31st, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today I want to go over, or tonight I want to go over with you the fourth quarter financial report for the city for 2023. Just a reminder, the quarterly report is unaudited activity, in this case through December 31st of 2023. What we'll do with that data is we'll take a look back and compare how we performed to what we expected to happen, which is our budget. And then we'll take that information and also look forward as to what we might expect to happen in the future based on what we now know happened in the past. So we have a variety of funds with the city. I think we have 38 or 39 funds. I'm going to focus on one fund tonight, which is the general fund. It's the one that most of our property tax revenue goes into, and it's the one that is by far the most dynamic. I would just tell you that the other funds all performed relatively well. Our enterprise funds did very well. Our water and sewer utilities, our golf fund did well, and there's really no concern with the performance of any of our other funds. So again, I'm going to focus on the general fund tonight. So how did we do last year? We did very well last year. And I'm going to boil it down to you very succinctly. Two things happened last year that boosted our performance. We had abnormally high interest earnings revenues, which are cyclical in nature, but that was a huge benefit to us on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we benefited from something we really don't want to benefit from, but we had continued challenges filling positions, particularly on the non-public safety side, which is to say we underspent in that area. Again, probably more than what we wanted to. But because we collected a lot more in interest earnings and because we spent less because we couldn't fill positions, we had a sizable surplus. Now, we knew we would have a surplus last year, but we had a surplus that was considerably larger than what we expected. So we transfer those extra dollars into our stabilization reserve based on the reserve policy that you approved last year. And because of that performance, we transferred about $13 million into that reserve. We'll talk about that in a couple of slides, but that's basically what happened. So just a little bit of a drill down. I stratified our revenue portfolio into five buckets. The way to read this is the blue bar is what happened in 2022. The orange bar is what we expected to happen in 2023, and the green bar is what actually happened. So property taxes, we overcollected compared to budget, which is good, and we collected more than we did in '22. I'll just draw your attention to two. We missed on franchise fees. I think Elizabeth talked about that a few weeks ago. That's volatile. It's probably the most difficult one for us to project, and we missed last year. So we undercollected pretty significantly in franchise fees. But look at interest earnings because that's what is the most important thing that's going to drive our future. We collected four times the amount that we collected in 2022 in interest earnings. We collected $26 million. Five, six years ago, we collected $400,000. And we overcollected even what we expected. We increased our budget, and we overcollected that. So that is what is driving our performance mostly on the revenue side. Let's look at expenditures. Again, I've stratified it into three simple buckets. The first bucket is public safety, which in this case is police and fire. And then the second bucket is everything else. And then the third little bucket over there transfers out to the reserve. So look at public safety. We spent pretty much mostly what we expected, somewhere around $173 million. Public safety is our priority. That's where we spend most of our money. But if you look at what we spent last year compared to what we spent the year before, you see a fairly significant increase, and that's primarily due to wage inflation. Again, not a surprise to us, but keep that in mind because that's going to be really important here in a couple of slides, too. So why did we have such a good year? Well, look at all other operations. We expected to spend $122 million. We spent $112 million, if I can use round numbers. So we underspent there by $8, $9 million. That is what is driving our overperformance on the expenditure side. So you combine those two together, and what that means is instead of $6.5 million transferred to the permanent reserve or the stabilization fund, we actually transferred closer to 13. That's really good because we're going to need that in the future, and I'm going to talk about that here in just a second. So let's look to the future. Now, when we do this, it's important to recognize what we're trying to do. All we're trying to do is tell you not what will happen in the future, but what could happen based on everything we know today. We live in a dynamic environment, so, you know, we're pretty much guaranteed to probably not be accurate. But we want to give you an idea of what could happen based on what we know today without any presumptions about any policy changes or strategic budget realignments or any decisions like that. We know those decisions are going to happen, but we're not going to make presumptions here. So this is all predicated on what we know today and what that would tell us the future looks like. And the short version is that we expect or hope that savings from positions vacancies decrease because we need to fill these positions to maintain service levels. What Councilmember Hous, Councilmember Mike just mentioned a few minutes ago about Park. That's a challenge for us. I mentioned public safety. We definitely expect continued wage inflation in public safety. So, and then compounding that is the fact that we expect interest earnings to peak and then start decreasing. So in the future, we're going to have interest earnings declining, which is going to impact our revenue growth, and we're going to have two items increasing our expenditure portfolio a lot. That's our forecast. That means no more transfers to the stabilization fund, and in fact, it means utilization of the stabilization fund. Again, this is redundant, but I only put this up to show the magnitude of interest earnings. Five years ago, that little box there that I've got the arrow pointed to would have been a line, not a box, but a line. That box is going to shrink. Again, you can see the enormity of public safety spending. It's well over half. It's about 60% of what we spend. And that box is going to grow significantly, which means the box I have an arrow to is going to disappear. That's the transfers to the permanent reserve. So let's finish up here and talk about, and I'm sorry, I keep calling it the permanent reserve. We call it several names. It's really the stabilization reserve is probably the most appropriate name, but I apologize for that. But based on the reserve policy the city council adopted last year, we scrape off excess earnings and put into the stabilization reserve, and it's available to provide a bridge in the future if we have any budgetary challenges. And that's a good thing. That gives us time to make adjustments, gives us a more deliberative process, and all that was done intentionally. And the anticipation is that we may need that in 2025. But what I would tell you is using the permanent reserve is not a recommended long-term solution for a couple of reasons. One, it'll disappear eventually. And two, it's a bad look for a lot of people that scrutinize our financial statements, particularly rating agencies. So I think Councilmember Johnson asked about the amount of the permanent reserve a couple of weeks ago. You can see on here, we expect it to end 2023 at about $32.4 million, which is really good. We think we'll get a little bit of a bump next year, so we'll be in good shape. But you can see that we expect it to decline significantly beginning in 2025. Again, not a bad short-term strategy. That's what it's there for, to use for things like that, to provide continuous and stable service levels, but probably not the best long-term strategy to do what this slide here would suggest. So that's all I have to say on our general fund in particular. I just have a couple more slides. I'll talk about our debt levels and ARPA, and then I want to talk about our property tax relief program briefly. This slide we always show, takeaway is our debt is, end of the year, about $1.4 billion with a B. That's a lot. The vast majority of that is utility debt. Utilities are a capital-intensive business, and that means that we issue debt, as you just heard in the previous item, to renovate and expand and maintain that, those assets. What, the portion of our debt portfolio that is paid back by property taxes is 4%. 4%. $59 million. A very, very, very small fraction of that debt portfolio. Let's pivot to ARPA just briefly. We submitted our report with Treasury that we're required to do each quarter. It's a super-high-level overview. We spent about $14 million in quarter four, which is good because our objective is to inject the money into the community as quickly as possible. So we're up to about $24 million in expenditures. Reminder, I think we were allocated $72.4 million, somewhere in that neighborhood. So we still have a ways to go, but we are definitely accelerating the pace of expenditures from ARPA. I just want to wrap up briefly and give you a quick update on the property tax relief program. We have finalized our strategies for implementing that. And so far, we've received, well, when I produced this slide today, about noon, we'd got 221 applications. We got another 25 in the afternoon mail, so we're up to, what, 245, somewhere around in there. Well over 200 applications. Again, we just geared up. We started paying last week. So far, we paid 21 folks, and the average payments are about $200 apiece, which is pretty much exactly what we expected. So we paid out about $4,000 so far. So there's plenty of money left, and we would encourage everyone that's eligible to apply. I would point out one thing, one challenge that we're seeing now is people probably are applying prematurely. They're providing us the required information for the state. But what we need also for them to do is wait until they receive their refund from the state before they actually apply because we need a copy of your refund check to prove that the state processed your refund. So what we do is we take the refunds now and we just email out to our applicants and tell them, hey, this is great. We have your application. You're on file. When you get that information, provide it to us. But if anyone's listening and needs to apply, it would expedite our process if you just wait until you get your refund back from the state and then apply. So, and I'd also like to point out, our Neighborhood City Hall staff has been extraordinarily helpful in this endeavor. They're really our front line in this, and they've done a fantastic job of working with our residents and guiding them in the right direction. We can see that in the applications that we get. So that's the information I have today, or tonight. Sorry for the brevity of my presentation. Again, '23 was a really good year for the general fund. '24 will be a good year. We have challenges on the horizon. We have a permanent, we have a stabilization fund to help moderate the impact of that. But long-term solutions would probably be a good idea. I point out the quarterly and the ARPA reports are both available online. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mark. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thanks, Mayor. Mark, I just have a quick question. I've had a couple of people ask me about their property tax rebate that we're doing. What is the turnaround time when they send it into the city? What should they expect?
We never committed to turnaround time. Our goal was to process within five to six weeks. We hope to exceed that, and now that we're geared up, we have a lot better procedure. So I would tell people five to six weeks, but our goal is to do vastly better than that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Mayor, thank you. Mark, what kind of interest rate are you getting on your, your money now?
It depends whether I go short or long, of course. But I would tell you right now, my portfolio is, has a yield of about 4%, which of course is shorter than my benchmark, which is the 90-day Treasury, although with the yield curve a little bit inverted, that's maybe not the best benchmark. But what are we buying now? Depends on, again, whether I stay short or go long, but somewhere in the 460s if I go out 18 months or two years. Somewhere maybe more towards the fives if I stay short.
Get more money on short term?
Yeah.
Okay.
But then again, I'd rather buy, I'd rather lock in duration so that I have more interest earnings in the long term.
Mark, I appreciate that presentation. I know that you went pretty quickly. Can you just one more time reiterate the real challenge that I think our community needs to understand? Right now, it looks good. Next year looks good, but not so good moving forward. And I think that our community needs to realize we're going to have some tough conversations, and the budget process is beginning right now. We've already had two public comment areas where Civic Engagement Academy alumni have come forward. Moving forward, we'll have more of that budget process. So really, it's an opportunity for people to tell us again, what are the important aspects of local government that we need to focus on?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right. We are in some expensive businesses. Public safety is a priority business, but it's an expensive business. And with wage inflation, fundamentally, our expenditure portfolio grows faster than our revenue portfolio, and that's problematic for us. And again, that's going to be aggravated when interest earnings start decreasing. It's going to make our revenue portfolio grow at an even slower rate, and our public safety expenditures are going to grow at a greater rate. So what that means is we will have a challenge to fund our current level of services in the future. Now, the good news is, again, due to the council's adoption of the reserve policy last year, we have a buffer. We've got a stabilization reserve, and that's a really good thing. And that'll help us be deliberative in our process as we try to strategically realign and prioritize our expenditures. But again, that's a short-term, you know, 12, 18-month solution. It's not a long term. So it is imperative that we get the feedback that you've suggested, Mayor, and that we consider options in order to realign strategically so we're sustainable.
I'm also going to add one more comment, that community can look at our website, wichita.gov, and specifically look at our community survey and the results that came out in January.
Yes, ma'am.
And look at that lower quadrant to the right.
Right.
Among the top three things that community said they wanted us to focus on were crime prevention, street maintenance, and economic development.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll open it up for public comment.
Well, I'm here for the evening, so you're going to get my comments on this. This is my favorite topic, finance. I'm an accounting major. So I want to dovetail on something that didn't show up in the chart. It's not Mark's fault, but I want to point it out to you so that you're aware of it. That debt does not include $42 million in star bond debt for the Ball Stadium. I hope you all know that. So our debt is higher than what he showed, and yet, there's a backstop in those bonds that if the Ball Stadium does not perform, we're going to have to pull that money out of the general fund to make those payments. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong. So this is another fiscal responsibility that's going to hit us that you don't see in those charts. $42 million in debt for star bonds on the new Ball Stadium. And that's why in 2025, we've got to worry because we're tagging on to a previous star bond district right now to carry us through the debt levels. But in 2025, that previous star district sunlights, it sunsets, and we're on our own to carry the new Ball Stadium. So one problem there is the West Bank development has stalled. It's not giving us the revenue we projected. So I'm just going to caution you. We have a lot of debt that's going to start coming due in a very short period of time. I did file a CORA to get the 2023 star bond report, and staff is busy, so they've delayed that CORA. But I'm anxious to see how the Ball Stadium's performing, and I'm waiting on that report. You all should read it, too. It's the star bond report for the city of Wichita, and you need to look at it and understand if we're meeting our targets or we're losing money. Public buildings need repairs, so when you do the budgeting process, you need to look at the capital improvement project plan. The Central Library, the former public library, I know that will be part of the RFP process Monday, March 25th. You all know, I sent you emails with pictures. The ceiling is leaking. There's extensive water damage at There's extensive water damage at 223 South Main. You all saw that in my email. This children's theater destroyed, tiles in the basement from flooding destroyed. That library probably needs $50 million in repairs on the roof. The ICE Center, you know, that's in disrepair because of the previous private maintenance contract we had with the Stephen family that we're currently in a lawsuit with. That's also needing repairs. You guys have got to start focusing on fiscal responsibilities facing you now with our city budget. Property taxes have already been shooting up. I see them where I live. They go up 10% to 15% every year. Property taxes go up. So be cautious about property tax abatements with economic development. You're really hitting middle-class people, taxpayers of Wichita, when you give property tax abatements in economic development. So be wise about those abatements. But I am truly concerned, you've heard me speak before, some of you are new, but the rest of you have heard me speak before, I am really concerned about the city of Wichita's financial situation. So please remember that Ball Stadium, read the star bond report when it comes out, and our buildings need repair. Thank you, Mark. Thank you all, too.
I would just like to shoot out an idea that maybe when and if, and I think it's going to be when, the ballpark plan does not generate enough revenue to pay for the bonds, that instead of drawing it straight from the general fund, that you create a temporary 1% sales tax to cover the shortfall. And that way, everyone in the whole city would pay for the damage instead of, I don't know, mitigating it so everyone helps out on that. And then what you could possibly do is this 1% sales tax, go back and ding the ballpark owners to pay back that shortfall that they were supposed to pay for in the first place. So I don't know, it's just an idea. I thought I'd put it out there. All right, thank you.
Any further comments? I see none. I'll have Mark just come up to the podium just to address the ballpark itself. I would like community to know the facts regarding, what will happen regarding that debt.
Yes, ma'am. A lot of what Celeste said is accurate. We do have about $42 million in outstanding debt on the baseball stadium. I will point out that we made a principal payment last year of about a half a million dollars, so our debt is beginning to decline. We file a disclosure statement, which we're required to do based on our bond covenants, and so I can relay this information to you because it's public information, and I'm hoping that my memory is going to serve me correctly. But if my memory is correct, last year, the district generated about $2.9 million in star bond revenues, and our debt service last year was about $2.3 million. In other words, we covered our debt service last year. And I think Celeste mentioned that, or Ms. Resett mentioned that the Phase 1 will expire in 2025. I think it's actually 2028, but her concept, she's accurate in her concept, when Phase 1 expires, we definitely need development in Phase 2 to be mature. But like I said, at this point, we covered our debt service last year, and that's, that's, that's what I would mention, so.
Mark, and again, since Celeste, Ms. Resett, mentioned the star bond report, when that is available to her, can you also forward that to all of us?
Yeah, that's actually produced by Economic Development's staff, and I'm sure they'd be happy to do that.
I see no further public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Any comments from the bench? I see none. This quarterly report, so I will motion to approve and accept and file, receive and file the quarterly financial report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
ZON 2023-76, zone change requests in the city from NR Neighborhood Retail to LC Limited Commercial located on the southwest corner of West 13th Street North and North Waco Avenue, 1351 North Waco Avenue.
Good evening. Scott Wedle from the Planning Department. For this case, the applicant is requesting, as you heard, to change the zoning from NR Neighborhood Retail and B Multifamily to LC Limited Commercial. This item is being heard today because the District Advisory Board and the Planning Commission recommendations both recommended approval, but they are slightly different in how they recommend that approval. In terms of the property, as you can see here, the site is generally located southwest corner of 13th and Waco. The site consists of one parcel. It is just over half an acre in size. It is zoned, as you heard, NR and B Multifamily, and it is developed with two commercial buildings and a parking lot. In terms of context, property to the north is zoned LC and developed with a learning center. Property to the south is zoned TF3, two-family residential and developed with a single-family dwelling. Property to the east is zoned LC, has a protective overlay on it, and is developed with commercial retail. Properties to the west are zoned NR and TF3 and are developed with a furniture store and single-family dwellings. Terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about property development standards, screening, and landscaping. In terms of review, on February 8th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and recommended approval unanimously, 11 to 0. That approval recommendation included a protective overlay, which is listed in the staff report. On March 7th, the District Advisory Board recommended approval unanimously, 8 to 0, of the zone change and the protective overlay. The DAB protective overlay differed slightly from the MAPC recommended overlay, overlay, and that was in two ways. The DAB recommended prohibiting financial institutions and also recommended prohibiting signage adjacent to residential. No members of the public spoke on the item at the DAB meeting or at the MAPC public hearing. No protests were received for this case. Therefore, the zone change request can be approved with a simple majority vote or four of seven votes. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics. So here is the aerial showing the site outlined in red. Here's the zoning map, which you can see that it's located there on the corner. This is the map from the comprehensive plan recommending commercial use in that area. Here's a photo of the site. And surrounding properties. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. You? Because this is a, an item from planning, there is no public comment on this, so this resides in Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to override the MAPC approved zone change request per the DAB recommendation with the protective overlay recommended by the DAB. Place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of the second reading. In support of this motion, I offer the following findings. The additional land use restrictions in the DAB recommendation recommended protective overlay will help reduce potential negative impacts to nearby properties.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
ZON 2023-61, conditional use requests in the city for group residence generally, general, generally located on the east side of North Emporia Avenue, within 100 feet north of East 10th Street North, 1110 North Emporia Avenue.
Hello again. Scott Wedle from the Planning Department for the record. In this case, this is a case that you've seen before. This, the applicant is requesting a conditional use in order to allow for group residence general at the site. The item is being heard because the DAB, initially, the DAB recommendation and Planning Commission recommendations were different. Second reason is because this item was deferred by the city council at both the January 16th meeting and the February 20th meeting. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting the conditional use in order to allow for the owner to house 24 individuals, including staff, at the site. About the property, well, the site is located at 1110 North Emporia, generally located north and east of the intersection of Emporia and 10th. Subject site consists of three parcels, is just under half an acre in size, zoned B Multifamily District, and currently developed with a multifamily building that is used as drop-off center, drop-in center for youth 21 years and younger. This is a former Ronald McDonald House, if you're familiar with the site. Under the current zoning, the property can be used as group residence limited by right, which allows up to 15 individuals, including staff, to reside at the location, hence the conditional use request to get it up to 24. In terms of context, property to the north is zoned TF3 and developed as a park. To the west is property zone B Multifamily and developed with a parking lot. To the south is property zone B Multifamily and developed with a single-family dwelling. And to the east is property zone B Multifamily and developed with a parking lot. In terms of the staff report, staff report provides information about parking at the site. In terms of review, on December 14th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for the item, reviewed the request, and recommended approval unanimously 11 to 0, with the conditions included, indicated in the staff report. No members of the public spoke on the item. On December 11th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the application, and neither the applicant nor the agent was present at the meeting, and the DAB recommended by a 9 to 0 vote, the city council deferred the item and sent it back to the DAB so that the applicant could be present to answer questions. No protest petitions were received for the requested conditional use. On January 16th and February 20th, the city council deferred the item in order to allow an opportunity for the applicant to attend a DAB meeting and to answer questions from various stakeholders. On March 12th, the District Advisory Board considered the application again. The applicant was in attendance and answered multiple questions. At the end of their deliberations, the DAB voted unanimously 7 to 0 to recommend approval per the staff recommendation, which was the same recommendation ultimately that the MAPC had taken. So in terms of council action, it's recommended city council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested conditional use, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish a resolution after approval, and this requires four out of seven votes. Alternatives include that you can override the MAPC, require a vote of five of seven votes, or as always, you can return it back to the MAPC, which requires four of seven votes. And again, the general note, as was noted with the last case, that the public hearing and public comments take place at the Planning Commission. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll take you through the graphics real quick. So again, here's the aerial. Here's a zoning map showing much B family, multifamily, and TF3 in the area. Comp plan showing a recommendation for commercial in the area. Site plan that was submitted by the applicant showing where parking would occur, photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? I see none. This resides in Council Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thank you to you and staff for being patient with this case and making sure that everyone got all of their questions answered. So with that, I move to adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested conditional use, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of the second reading.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Hanger LLC, use and lease agreement to license and access agreement, James Jabara Airport.
Good night, Mayor, council members. Jesse Romo, Director of Airports, happy to be here today to talk about Jabara development on the east side. For a long time, we've looked at developing on the east side of Jabara. There's been opportunities identified through master plans, airport layout plan updates, but there's always been challenges as relates to road access, utilities, and additional airfield infrastructure that's needed. So we were approached by a local company, and they pitched an idea that was mutually beneficial, and it culminated into three different agreements. Two of the agreements are ready for you today. That would be the lease agreement and access agreement. The last piece of this puzzle would be the land acquisition. That's still under negotiation. Let me jump a little over to Jabara's planning efforts. This was part of our last airport layout plan update that was done. This is one of the exhibits. It shows a concept on how development can look, not just on the east side, but the west side. And I'll just take a moment, since I've got you here. There we go. My mouse is moving. And just kind of bring you up to speed on a couple of things happening along this. We've been following along with this plan for development. Clemens Aviation has been developing out in this area. We just got a KDOT and FAA grant to help us realign and redesign this taxiway, make it a little bit bigger for bigger aircraft, and so we're already seeing development applications come in on this parcel. We also went after a grant from the State Department of Commerce to get airfield infrastructure set up in place south of the current NCAT campus. And so we have been trying to get creative as possible and trying to get these things done and moved. And you'll notice here, there's 60 acres or so identified for development that could occur in the future, according to this exhibit. So that leads me to the development that we're here to talk about, which is on the east side, and it was very close to where I will show you, and I'll have another picture to fill that in. But this one, this agreement is negotiated with Hanger LLC. It's got a 30-year with two 10-year options on it. It's approximately 17.4 acres of land. It'll be a corporate-style, large hangar, and it's a minimum of $7 million to be invested. So it's not just the lease premises of investing in the ramp and taxiway connection, but also the taxiway connector extending all the way to the runway, which was vital for us for development in the future. And so with this, too, just want to make the point clear that this is not a through-the-fence operation. Through-the-fence is a term that's used quite a bit by FAA. It's also not always warmly welcomed by FAA to have from private property onto airport property for development. But what we did with this situation is we're developing strictly on airport property, and we're allowing for access from private property onto airport property to get to their leasehold premise. And so there's an access agreement, and it covers that little area there that is circled. And the last piece that we'll come back to you later, really addresses, if you recall that big green rectangle that was part of the earlier drawing I showed, it really addresses that center-third portion of property that was identified for us to acquire. And so not only are we negotiating that, but we're also negotiating whether or not we can get possibly an easement or connection to Greenwich Road from that area, too. And so this one is going to follow FAA standards, which is why it takes so long to get done, and then we'll be able to file for reimbursement from the FAA at a later date. The financials. Hanger LLC has agreed to the current published land rental rates for Jabara Airport. The agreement does result in new annual revenue of over $182,000 with 1% escalation occurring every year, and the facility rent for the hangar will begin at 40 years at the then-current market rate as experienced by, or excuse me, as determined by the experienced aviation appraiser. With that, it's our recommendation that the airport authority approve the necessary, the, excuse me, the agreements and authorize the necessary signatures. I'm happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? I see Councilmember Johnston.
Jesse, thank you. Why is there only a 1% escalation? Why not tie it to inflation rate or cost of living?
That's kind of a, I don't want to say a standard. We negotiate what those inflation rates are going to be for the agreement, so some agreements aren't as favorable and don't have as much escalation, and so we were pretty happy with getting to 1%. And that's where, that's how our land rates increase anyway, the ones that we have published, and those are based off of market studies, and so we can't charge too much. We need to have a fair market value and comparisons done by FAA standards. So 1% is really just kind of a standard approach to that rate.
If I could jump in also, Mayor. Jesse, you may want to talk about the ownership of the buildings. The situation at the airport's unique, and The situation at the airport's unique in that you have someone building a building which we will eventually own. So they're not only paying us the lease, but that's one of the reasons why the interest rates are lower, or the escalation is lower, because we're inheriting an asset as well.
That's an excellent point, Mr. Manager. Sorry, my brain's just not thinking too late fast at this hour, but there's different ways to approach ownership when you do airport development. And what the Wichita Airport Authority has historically done is own things on the front end. And so if something's going to be developed on our property, we own it upfront. It does afford the tenant property tax exemptions. So there afforded some good benefits out of that. There are only a couple of small cases, and it's dealing with government entities, that we don't own on the front end. We use a reversion clause, which is reverting the ownership to the Airport Authority at the end of an agreement. But as the city manager pointed out, we have this one set up in normal course, which is we take ownership as soon as it's constructed.
You have a couple of those at Midcontinent now, don't you? Somebody else has built it and that reverts back?
No. As a matter of fact, Eisenhower. We have a couple that aren't owned by us, but they're owned by the federal government. So some of it is FAA-owned, and then there's another one that's post office-owned. But at Jabara, our agreement with the county for NCAT, there is a reversion clause.
I see no further questions. This item is on the airport, so public comment is allowed? Any public comment? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Jesse. I just want to say thank you for your presentation and then for all of your work on this. I know that you have definitely worked to get to yes, so I appreciate it. I know there's a next phase, but thank you for what you've done so far. I had the pleasure of sitting on your interview committee when you were joining us for the city of Wichita. And one of the things that I went into that interview process was the lens of Jabara and the economic impact that it could have. I've lived here for almost 23 years and hadn't seen much development until the last couple of years. And so it's so exciting to see the web corridor really grow, really expand, lots more infrastructure. And so this is just a wonderful new addition. So thank you for all of your work on this. I truly appreciate you not only taking care of Eisenhower, but also taking care of Jabara.
This resides in Councilmember Tuttle's district.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So with that, I will enthusiastically move that the Wichita Airport Authority approve the agreements and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public participation at council meetings. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jamie Buster with the City Manager's Office. Currently, public comments are allowed at city council meetings in various ways as outlined in our city code, which is Section 2.04.190. One Avenue is the public agenda. That is handled on a first-come, first-served basis, and citizens must sign up by noon the Tuesday before, so seven days before the meeting. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Citizens wanting to speak on agenda items, it's open for discussion. They can come up after the item has been presented and the mayor opens it for discussion. They are also allowed five minutes to speak per agenda item. At the request of Councilmember Glasscock, city did a analysis of five peer cities, Tulsa, Fort Worth, Des Moines, Oklahoma City, and Kansas City, Missouri. We found that not all cities reviewed allow public comments during the meetings. Kansas City, for example, only allows it during their standing committee. Right now, Wichita and Kansas City do not have a pre-registration process for items aside from public agenda. I'll note for Wichita, you do have to sign up in advance again for the public agenda, but regular agenda items you do not have to sign up in advance for. Tulsa and Des Moines, you do have to do advanced registration to speak on agenda items. Wichita and Tulsa have the longest public comment period at five minutes. Here is a graph that kind of shows you. So Oklahoma City and Fort Worth are three minutes, and Des Moines and Kansas City, Missouri are about two. There are no financial considerations with this item. Any ordinance changes relating to public comment must comply with the First Amendment, and it's recommended that you receive a report. And myself and the city manager are available for questions.
Thank you again, Jamie, for the public meetings part of the presentation. I also know that there is supposed to be a slide deck regarding public engagement. I'd like to know if we can also get that at the same time and have further discussion after, so that we have both of them.
Yes, Mayor, we weren't sure how you wanted to handle it, whether you wanted to deal with the council proceedings first, or whether you wanted to hear all of it. So we are prepared to talk about what we're doing in engagement at this point.
I'll look at my council members. We'll go ahead and take the presentation and then take it as a whole.
Okay. And so at the request of Council, Tyler Schufelbein, City Wichita Communications. So we were asked to kind of give an overview of what we've done with communications throughout the years, kind of what we're doing now. This is just background information. We're always open to new ideas and trying different things, and we realize that the landscape changes, because 2008, when I was hired on City 7 was a primary thing, and that's what we focused on. That's no longer the deal. You know, we've gone through Facebook, Nextdoor, live streaming, COVID. It switched the way we do things, and now we're focused more on online and social media through that. So just, it changes, and we have to be able to adapt, and so that's something we're always looking at. Different platforms have different audiences, one of the challenges we face. So the messages and content need to be different on different platforms. So what works on Facebook doesn't necessarily work on TikTok, on Twitter, on LinkedIn. So we got to evaluate each one of our communications channels and make sure the message is fitting the audience that we're targeting there. Who are we communicating with as a city? So as we know, we have the very engaged residents who are always here, always engaged, getting information. They know a lot of what's going on. And we have a lot of people who are only communicating or reaching out when projects or different initiatives affect them or their areas. So that's when they get involved. And then we have people, like I'll just use my wife, for example, has no idea what's going on with the city. She doesn't care to. Honestly, I start talking about what's going on, and she's like, I have no idea what you're talking about. So we got to figure out how we reach more of those people and say, we want everybody involved and everybody's voice coming to the table. So we talked earlier in the meeting about the National Community Survey. This helps drive our efforts on communications. And we talked about street repair being in that lower right quadrant you were talking about, and public information is on that side as well. And so we look at the real versus perceived, and perception can be reality for someone. So Wichita by EB, a social media influencer, did a post on street improvements and that sort of thing, and said, okay, have you looked at streets in Colorado and Oklahoma? And then all of a sudden, all the comments were positive, and people thought our streets were pretty good. Look at other places, you know, that do the same comments, some of the television stations ask the same thing. It was more negative light, and everybody kind of piles on and say, we have horrible streets. So it's that perception and what information, what tools, what information do we need to get out to reach those people to say, this is what we're doing? So that's where communication can come into play with some of those as well. So some of the channels getting into that, we have council meetings. I'm not going to run through everything on this slide. You can see what we have here, YouTube, Wichita.gov, City 7. We broadcast agenda review, and we've done multiple evening council meetings over the years. We found that turnout is usually low. It was nice to see a good crowd here tonight. But typically, what we've seen is turn up, turnout goes up when we have high-profile items or contentious items, more people show up for those. So that's something that we've noticed over the years. Mayor and council, you speak, have different speaking engagements. That's one way we can reach out. We have the mayor's media briefing, district advisory boards. We have six every month that are in the evenings that public can come to. We have a lot of community members serving on those and other boards. We have district breakfast. And then there's direct email, phone interaction, council members, community service representatives. You can get all that information on our website to reach out and communicate. So it was just different avenues we have for communication. Talked a little bit about boards and committees. We have 39 of them that we can count, that we know of. I'm sure there could be more out there. All of those are listed on our website. Each one of them have their own page with different information about those and contact information. Many of those are also either livestreamed or recorded and uploaded to YouTube as well. I just wanted to highlight budget engagement, because it can be a little bit different than some of our other engagement. But we've done over the years lots of community budget workshops in the daytime and the evening. This is one of those we were talking about earlier tonight at the Advanced Learning Library about a week or two ago. We do social media posts, we have social media town halls, budget simulator, DAB meetings, council meetings, and then there's Budget Questions@Wichita.gov email. You can ask questions about the budget and then obviously information on the website. Speaking of website, this is something I could talk about for a very long time, so I'll try to keep it brief. There's tons of information there. We just did an upgrade back in December. Lots of good information there, lots of things you can sign up for, email list, newsletters. There's a directory to get all sorts of staff information and contacts there to reach out if you're needing something. We have an app to report issues. We have a calendar, so you can see any and all public meetings or events we're holding. We have different tools. The snowplow tracker is one that got picked up on CNN for Megan for naming the snowplows. So that was something that went viral, was kind of cool. But you can see where the snowplows have been and where they're going. And then Find My Councilmember, that's something we made a little more prominent on the council member website or the webpage. You can find out which district you live in and see who you, which council member you need to contact for issues. Social media and web, we have 55-plus social media avenues across multiple platforms. We've held social media town halls, we do live video Q&amp;As. So either, whether it be on YouTube, Facebook, we do a live topic, so say budget or whatever other topic, and then we can take comments from Facebook, YouTube, and answer those live on the air. We've also used Zoom for that. Then we have Forum, our online engagement tool. We put projects on there and get discussion done, online surveys, and then emergency alerts. We have Civic Ready that we've partnered with Sedgwick County, so you can sign up to receive alerts on specific, just different notifications that might not raise to the level of alerts that get sent out to everybody automatically. And then we also came up with the boil water advisory alert for all water customers. We figured that was, we found that that was a need, and so we now have a system to alert all water customers if we have another boil water advisory. Citizen engagement, we have the Civic Engagement Academy. I know some of you have participated in that. There's a photo, one of the classes right there. We've had the Police Academy, Citizen Fire Academy. Councilmember Glasscock, I know a long time ago, you were on the Youth Council. And then we have city staff, or the city presence at hosting community events, such as Open Streets, River Fest, Farmer's Market. And then we have presence at presentations and neighborhood meetings. So we've held lots of town halls over the years. We just had the Successful Homeless Town Hall a couple of weeks ago. And then just, I'm not going to read them all off, but you can see there's just different items over the years that we've done different town halls with. I'll say that assisted with KDAY on 29th and Grove, that wasn't ours, but we put forth a lot of effort into assisting them with that one. Media relations, so this is one, you know, we have standing appointments with different news outlets and media partners where the mayor or departments or council members will go out and meet with media and talk about different things. And we also respond to media requests. They are almost every day emailing us, calling us, asking for information, responding to those requests, and then pitching different story ideas. And we have media briefings, events, ribbon cuttings, groundbreakings, that sort of thing. Wichita Eagle, we have legal publications, so for our ordinances and that sort of thing, we pay them to promote our legal publications in the newspaper. I think that's required, and to be able to publish those, but we also publish those on our website. So this is one slide we like to bring up with our challenge working with the media is at the Civic Engagement Academy, they pull up this slide and they ask all the participants, what of these topics, which of these topics have you heard about? And most of the time, they'll raise their hand on the water boil advisory or propose changes to the firework ordinance, something that has a little negative connotation to it. So the media is more, in general, they will cover more of the stuff that's negative, and it paints us in a bad picture. But a lot of these good stories or things we promoted, people haven't heard about as much. So that's something we have a challenge with, you know, that we would like to see a little more of the positive news coverage being covered, some of the good stories. That's a challenge we continually face there. Influencers, so this is again evolving. We're using influencers to promote some of our messages and get information out there. Wichita by EB just did a post today talking, asking people, how do they get engaged with the city? What's communication look like to them? So that's feedback we're getting to see, okay, how do they want to engage with us? And we're using that and say, okay, do we need to try this or go after this? And using influencers and the media to get our message out there, the public might see that, not see that as the city communicating with them, but somebody else, but that message is originally coming from us. And I think that's what's most important, is we're getting that information out there. Paid media, you guys all know what that is and how expensive that can be. You know, we don't have a huge budget, so it's hard to pay for every one of our, you know, initiatives to go out there and get information, but we try to be very strategic in what we do in promoting our services. Recruitment, another thing we have, career fairs, just to promote another before your district advisory board meetings in May, we're going to have more career fairs, so encourage people to get out to those. We have employee decals, we speak at high schools, military bases, colleges, and we also do media buys for recruitment. Signage, one thing we started doing several years back is throughout different areas of the city where there will be construction or resurfacing going on, there'll be sign, hey, construction coming soon, or new lanes coming, something like that along those lines, signage saying, we will be in your area, the streets will be improving. We do bus wraps, yard signs, all sorts of things. We have digital and print signage at city facilities promoting different thing. We have like the monitors here at City Hall outside of security. We're trying to just more information, we're trying to get out in front of people. Here's just a list of some of the other communication efforts. I'll say we've had added podcasts in the last few years, including a Spanish-speaking podcast with WPD and Neighborhood Services. So it's another way to reach out to individuals there in a different way. Water bill communications, that's something we've utilized at times. Messages on hold is another we can, as people call in, they can get information as they're waiting on hold. Internal communication, that's something we're starting to look at now, because we believe if the better informed all of our employees are about, across the organization, about all of our topics, the better it is, and they can then go out and communicate and pass that message along. So we're working with human resources right now and other departments to really come up with a good internal communication plan, and how can we best get that message spread out throughout the organization, and then they'll be able to pass that along. So that's just one more thing we're doing. So that's very high level. I tried to speed through it, I know it's late, so I'll stand for questions at this
This is now time for staff to get some questions from the bench. Again, we want to reiterate that this was something, again, that we would not normally have public comment on, but at the beginning of this meeting, we said that we would have public comment. But we'll start at the bench first, and then we'll move to public comment next. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you very much for the presentation. That was more slides than I expected, so I'm very thankful for that. And thank you for doing both. I think public engagement and also public participation goes hand in hand, so I'm glad that we had that conversation holistically as well. I was very hopeful, so the reason I'd originally, this is a brief comment, and then I have a question. Reason I had originally brought this up was to make sure that we were engaging the public and being as less restrictive for free speech as possible. And so I'm very glad that we, compared to our comparison, cities are doing a really good job, and I'll have comments about that in a second. So I'll get back in a second. I'm going to go with the public engagement questions real quick. It seems that we're engaging the public in a host of ways, and everybody has the opportunity to engage if they can find a capacity to engage. The two that stood out to me as antiquated ways that we're engaging with residents is City 7. Number one, I remember being on that when I was like 15. I don't think I've ever turned that on since then. And so I do have concerns about City 7. I know we'll talk about that more probably in the budgetary process, about whether that's a priority or not from residents. But the second question I have, that I have regards to the legal notifications with McClatchy Newspaper. How much on average, I know it's different, do we pay them per year as part of our long-term contract?
I think to answer your second question first, I think it's about $150,000 a year for that. And then, do you want to go with City 7, or do you have more follow-up on that?
Nope, the City 7 one is fine. I know that we'll address that longer, because that's more internal, this would be more external, so we have a larger contract. In addition, with our legal notices with McClatchy, they publish it in a newspaper, correct?
Yes.
And my understanding is that on their website, it is only hosted for two weeks when I went to give review of this week. Is that correct?
Do you know, I'm not 100% sure of, I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Okay. Those same legal notices can be published on our website at, with no cost of $150,000, correct?
Yep, yeah, it's no cost, and they're already there.
Okay, and they're already there. Okay. I also noticed when I went to review that this week, that they go back all the way to 2016 in some regards already. So thank you for staff for also proactively keeping that information on there. So I have plenty of other comments, but I want to leave it if there's any other questions from fellow council members. from fellow council members.
I have further questions regarding that $150,000 per year contract. Is this legally required of us to have this contract? And then can you tell us if this is a redundancy with our wichita.gov website?
Mayor, I'll take the first question. Staff have proposed, there is an option to modify the ordinance where we could go to online publication. That's an option legally? I'll let Tyler talk to the other question.
Excuse me, what was the other part of your question?
I'd like to know more if it's currently a redundancy or it's a legal requirement that we have to have it.
Oh, that we're doing both? It's a redundancy at this time.
And currently, our wichita.gov website goes all the way back to 2016 in terms of ordinances, so people can check them out right now.
I believe, I haven't checked the date, but it does go back a while, so yeah, I'd have to get the exact date for you.
Thanks, Mayor. I was going to joke that that probably wasn't too long ago for Councilmember Glasscock in the mayor's youth council.
Tyler had said it was a long time ago. I do take concern with that.
One, appreciate the presentation, and I think the comparison on us and our pure cities, I know we're talking about communication and getting the word out, but we really could highlight that, because that's something that was pretty awesome to see that we're doing so good and being so open. And like Councilmember Glasscock said, it really supports First Amendment rights of people to engage. I'm looking forward to hearing more conversation about that. Also appreciate the conversation about how we are reaching out, whether it's the legal notifications, and our citizen surveys show that some of our other resources actually reach more people in a better way. But then, you know, how could we maybe even use some of those resources to reach even more people or build upon what we're already doing, maybe well, make it better? So love to have that conversation as well amongst the body and also the community.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that does stick out to me, we have five open slots for public comment. We end it Tuesday, and sometimes we might have a couple of open slots still. So is that something we could look at, maybe just opening that until agendas go out? That way there's, if we have extra slots, maybe we can get those filled.
Yes, that's something we could look at. It would need to be an ordinance change, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I know it's a little late to be redundant, but just wanted to jump in. I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. I was also pleasantly surprised to see that we are among the top as far as allowing for public comment. I say all the time, this is the community city hall, and we should be here to listen to them. We need to listen to their concerns and help to make good and informed decisions. I did also, I know Councilmember Johnson mentioned it, but the National Community Survey, as many options as you provided and the wonderful overview of everything that we do to engage the community in so many different levels, only 27% of our community members that were surveyed said that they feel we are being open and transparent to the public. And only 31% said that they feel that we are informing residents about issues facing the community. So I hope that with this discussion and moving forward, we don't think about limiting anything or changing anything that diminishes that. I hope we will only think about ways that we can enhance community engagement and have more. I think redundancy in communication to the community is just fine, because everybody gets their message in a little bit different way, and so the more that we can do, the better. Thank you.
Any further questions? Yeah. I see none. We will now open it up for public comment. Thank you for staying.
Celestra Sat, Wichita native, four generations, grew up in Kansas. I love Wichita, that's why we take care of the Joan of Arc flower beds, that's why we did A Price Water Park with Lowe's help and Tree Top Nursery. You can see that we love Wichita by the work we pour into downtown. Citizen engagement, Councilmember Tuttle, thank you so much for what you said. I would repeat it word for word. It's so important that we have redundancy. It is so important that you look at the survey and see that 73% of citizens don't trust city hall. That's appalling. So anything you do to cut citizen engagement or public conversation is going to reflect poorly upon you as a city council member. But I want to hit my point, so I'm going to read what I wrote tonight. I wouldn't be standing here if there hadn't been a lack of communication by the Riverfront Master Legacy that was presented by city-backed coalition, city-backed funds, and that first public meeting in July 2019, they did not allow questions from the public, and they did not allow a discussion on Century 2. And here I am, save Century 2, five years later. I'm using my FDIC examiner background, my chief internal auditor, my accounting skills to watch over you all now, because I've realized I can't trust what's always put out there for me to read. It was not Stormwater Utilities that took Hotel Guest Tax and put it into the Fairfield Inn. That was mislabeled. That's debt that we still owe. It was not a $1 million loan that had been repaid on the Wichita Ice Center, Inc. There had been only one repayment in 10 years, but I couldn't tell that from my Cora. There have been so many instances in the past five years where I've used my skills to look at information the city gave me that was incorrect, misstated, or lacking in telling the truth about the situation. So anything you do to limit citizen engagement, I will throw it right back at you and fight you tooth and nail over that, because this is our forum. This is where we ask you questions, this is where we talk to you as a constituent. And the amazing thing about this discussion tonight, which I've stayed till, what, 10 o'clock to talk to you about this, is not once when you all ran in your campaigns did I hear this as a priority. Citizen engagement and public participation is my campaign forum. Never heard that, so why are we spending staff time, thank you for the information, and staff salaries to look at this issue? The more ways you can communicate, the better. So don't limit it, keep doing what you're doing to try to reach people. That's why only 17% of Wichita voters voted in the last election, because they've lost faith in our government. So you've got to do your best to bend over backwards and help us understand the budget, the finances, our money, where it's going to. And I don't care what Oklahoma's doing, I don't care what Tulsa's doing, because you know what? We're one of the last cities to ask for medical marijuana or Medicaid expansion, so don't compare us to other cities, because on some scales, we're at the bottom of the list, and it's never mattered now. So why is public engagement now the overriding concern tonight that we have to stay till 10 o'clock to try to say, what are you doing next to limit our input to you all? The city of Wichita has pressing needs, you've addressed several of them tonight, so I want to praise you for addressing that. The Child Advocacy Center absolutely must be done. Homelessness, domestic violence, we have a declining density in our city core, which is reflected by populations shifting west and east, and we're closing public schools. We're facing a financial deficit. You heard that from Mark Manning tonight. You guys, you women, you men, have so much on your plate. I don't know why we're talking about this, but all I can say is, don't disrespect the voters who voted for you. Don't change our ability to speak to you in this format in five minutes on the agenda items. I listened to you for 40 minutes debate city council vacancies, so now mutual respect, allow me to speak for five minutes at the end of those agenda items. So please don't change it, file the report, let's move on to more important issues, but thank you for your service. I do appreciate it, and good evening.
Mr. Sett, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Mr. Sett, can you come back up real fast? I just want to offer a brief comment instead of you sitting down, too. When I originally brought this up, I would urge you to go back and watch that meeting as well. The reason I brought it up was not because we wanted to increase barriers, that we wanted to lessen barriers for people to be able to speak. And that was the impediment for bringing this up, is that I believe that it should be easier to speak, that it shouldn't be on a public agenda, that you have to come and present prior, or sign up a week prior. And so that was the reason and the initiative being that it's brought up. So I'm sorry that you're under the assumption that it was far more restrictive if you go back and listen to that meeting and the direction we had staff. It was to figure out ways to encourage public engagement.
And I didn't hear that, but thank you for correcting that. That's not what I heard Friday, and I did listen to the agenda meeting.
Yeah, so that is the reason that we were, I mean, I don't think we spoke about it on Friday when we were there, at least I don't think any of the council did. But our reason is, how can we be better at public engagement? How can we offer more opportunities for speech in this room, not the other way around? So I just want to make sure that's clear before we have this discussion as well.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Glasscock, thank you. You said a lot of what I wanted to say in response. I think, and when these items come up, it's good to engage council and maybe ask, you know, before the assumption piece. All of us are looking for more ways to support First Amendment, free speech, allowing more opportunity to engage. And the reason why, I know why Councilmember Glasscock wanted to have this conversation, the reason I wanted to have this conversation is because of some of the things that Mr. Sett said, there's a lack of trust with us. People say that we're not engaging, they don't know things, and I will say for District 1, in my campaign, I actually did talk about engagement, which is why I always talk about knocking doors, and I said that then, and that's why I still knock doors to that point. We've knocked doors, we put flyers, we put door hangers on doors, and people still talk about not knowing. So for me, I want to have this conversation to see, again, what the people say we're doing good and what we could do better. The things that we're not doing well, we can talk about maybe not doing that anymore, if so. But it's about trying to rebuild that trust with people to engage more, maybe in new ways, maybe different ways. We haven't talked about geo fencing. I'm just trying to find ways in which we can reach people where they are. Oftentimes, even with some of the folks we appoint, we'll tell them, the information stops there. And the goal is to get more of that information out, much like Tyler said, when we have good things going on, you don't always see that talked about in the media. Not everybody signs up for our newsletter. So again, this conversation for me was looking at, how can we be better about that to Councilmember Glasscock's point? If you don't have to sign up a week in advance, and you sign up a day of, what does that look like? Will people like it? Will people not like it? Those are the things I think that we should be talking about and further for public meetings like the one that was mentioned. When you have a public presentation, which is a public-private partnership in a public space, and all conversation is supposed to happen upstairs, and conversation is attempted to be had downstairs, there may be people to say, go upstairs. And maybe we need to find better ways to communicate where a conversation's actually happening and not where it's not supposed to happen. So I think there's a lot of lessons we can learn from that, and we can continue to have those conversations, and I'm hoping to hear from more people, not only here tonight, but those who might be watching who may reach out via email.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Sett, thank you. Appreciate you doing that. Question for you, the $150,000 for the publication legal notices, how do you feel about that?
We need to do it.
Go ahead and spend 150 grand?
That's right.
Okay, I have a problem with that, because it's taxpayers' dollars, and I would rather not spend it on that. So we may disagree on that.
I know where we could find $150,000. There's, there are inefficiencies right now, like we pay RIN and Water Walk for offices, where we could have them in the former public library, and we'd save $300,000 right there a year.
Well, maybe that'd be 450 then, save another 150 for not having legal publications. So I appreciate Councilwoman Johnson's mentioning of geo fencing. We're doing that in District 5, you're getting some of those on Facebook, doing that to try to get the word out about what's going on in the city in District 5. So we are doing geo fencing already. We've been allotted a budget of $600. I think it should be $1,000. But that's, it is what it is, so I appreciate that. And $600 is better than zero, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Sett, for coming forward. I just want to make a couple of comments, because I did run on restoring trust in city hall. That was my third point. The fourth one was building a united community, and that deals with community engagement. So those two points have been my mantra for running for this office, because I know that we need to communicate better, and we need to restore the trust that our community has lost, or perceived or not perceived. And so my intention, again, at the very beginning of this meeting, was to make sure that we had public comments regarding this section, which usually during council member agenda items, there is no public comment. So that shows again our good faith, and you saw our vote, we want that engagement. In addition to, yes, it is late, and I really do appreciate those who are still tuning in online and those who are here present, I really appreciate it. Just a few weeks ago, we started a process where we asked, can we have more evening time meetings? Because we understand not everyone can attend our Tuesday 9:00 AM meetings, and this council voted to have four evening time meetings. And so there will be four during this year, one each quarter. And again, it's to increase community engagement and public comment. But it does make me sad, because I know that at the beginning, at 6 o'clock, this room had many more individuals, and I would love to hear their comments during this specific section, because it is about public comment and how to engage better. So it does make me realize that we need to have, maybe this, go back to DABs, I'm just speaking, that we need more information regarding how we can better communicate with our community, whether it's reminding them these are the outlets that we do communicate, how can we be better at communicating with all different age groups, all different backgrounds, from all different areas of our community? So this is not an agenda item where we're necessarily voting on something, but this will give us an opportunity to direct staff to get back more information or put it back on an agenda item or DAB agenda item. So I just want Ms. Sett to know that that's the reason why. And in addition to, I do have to say that when we brought this up for this specific meeting to have engagement on this topic, it was because we were trying to figure out, how can we allow individuals who come to city council meetings that were not on the public agenda item and don't have a specific comment on an agenda item, but rather something else, how they can address the city council? Because we don't have that opportunity right now. The opportunities are for people to sign up on the five public agenda item slots, or you must speak on one of the topics. Whereas if you have an additional thought or concern, you don't get to do that right now, you don't get to talk about it. So the intention was to increase public engagement and allow those who do come to our city council meetings the opportunity to actually address the council when we're all here. So that was the intention. And again, this usually would have been a workshop, but instead, we wanted this to be part of the evening agenda item. So again, thank you for letting us explain how the process worked, and we'll continue with public comment.
Well, my public comment is I'm going to have to embarrass myself and apologize, because at the agenda meeting, I'd looked at the, what is it when you click on the blue thing and you go to the other page with the report? It talked about cutting, I saw that it was all short minutes, like two minutes. So I made the assumption that you guys wanted to cut minutes on public comment, and so I spent all day trying to set Celeste's hair on fire about it. And I spent the whole meeting writing my best inner Tom Paine to, you know, free speech, yes. And then I find out it was all about, much ado about nothing, so I apologize. And like they say, just because you're paranoid doesn't mean they're not out to get you, so, all right, sorry.
I, Mayor.
Councilmember Glasscock, sorry.
Thank you. Hey, in the future, feel free to reach out. Hey, in the future, feel free to reach out to us beforehand. I'm happy to have a conversation before this meeting at any point. I'll give you my personal cell, and I'm happy to take in your calls anytime so we don't have to come up here angry when maybe we could solve this prior. So I appreciate you coming up and engaging. I want more people to engage, but maybe we can have a lot of these conversations prior and solve a lot of the fears ahead of time, too. So thank you for coming up here, and thanks for expressing that, too.
Well, when I thought that's what you were doing, I said a few words, you probably wouldn't be saying that right now, so.
I just have a couple of comments. One, I appreciate this evening meeting. I think that's gonna really, as more of them happen, is going to give people more opportunity to come up and get engaged. Observation I can make, having attended several of the morning meetings, is parking is horrendous in City Hall, particularly when you have, there were 19 vehicles that were city vehicles parked out here on the surface lot. Why can't they be moved over to Roundsome Porter, number one? And number two, there were another eight spots that were reserved by cones so that city vehicles could park there when they came back in for the day, thereby denying any access to parking, which is another obstacle for people coming to the meetings. But I do appreciate this first step. Perhaps no one noticed the parking in the past, and by bringing it up, maybe corrective action can be taken. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for tonight.
Any further public comment? I see none. I will bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
I'll jump in, since I was the one that proposed this. I have copious amounts of notes and comments, but I will leave some, let colleagues talk, and I'll probably come back to some as well. First off, the reason we're talking about this is because the status quo wasn't working. As Councilwoman Tuttle says, people don't have faith in City Hall. So how do we restore trust and faith in City Hall? And that's why we're having this conversation today. We also have to figure out how people get their information and make sure that we're just not doing the same old, same old, because that's how we've always done it, when we can engage better and also save taxpayers' money in the process as well. The fact that we're having an evening meeting right now shows good faith, that we want to engage more people, that we want to engage other voices. I know I've talked with my colleagues as well about, hey, maybe we take these meetings outside of City Hall. What does that look like? Or is that better to have town halls? I know when the mayor hosted her town hall on homelessness, over 300 people attended. That was probably the largest town hall that I had seen, and it was because we went outside of these doors. Sometimes it's intimidating to come to City Hall, sometimes people don't even know that. And if we're going into their neighborhoods in the evenings, people can engage in different ways as well. We don't want to just talk the talk, we want to walk the walk. In addition to that, again, this may be a little bit chaotic, I will be having, I think, bringing it to DAB to have further conversation is a very positive thing. I will be making a motion at some point tonight that we remove the seven days in advance that any person that comes to City Hall can sign up to speak that day. So I will be making that before you even go to DAB. For a lot of people, they don't how to navigate the system. The system's hard. Obviously, we have frequent flyers that come every single week that know when they can speak, when to sign up to speak, how long they can speak, and their minutes or their remarks are usually exactly at five minutes. Most people do not do that, and most people, it's an intimidating process. Most people also don't want to stand at a lectern and be able to speak to city council knowing that's recorded, know that it's being promoted elsewhere. So how do we engage those people that don't want to come up? I know, Ms. Rossett, you love speaking in front of a mic, which is great. We all do, too, because we're up here, but a lot of people don't feel comfortable doing that. So how do we engage those unique voices as well to steal a KLC term? I am thankful that staff did present this, because I think it shows that we're doing a lot of things well. That doesn't mean we can't continue to engage more people. In addition to that, I'm almost done with my original first comments, and then I'll, again, open it up to everybody else as well. When it comes to time limits, I'm open, whether it's three to five, but I want to make sure that we're engaging voices and not stifling people's free speech right. And so at the start of meeting, one thing my mother actually brought up to me that before I even could have this conversation with her is, she watches every meeting, so hello, Mom. A couple of the meetings, people had to leave before their business item was heard because of discussion at the prior. So how are we doing the business of this body first? And then how are we also creating space where people can engage and not have their voices stifled? Every single person on this bench, I know it's 10:15 at night, if we started this meeting at 9:00, our job is to stay here until 2:00 AM and hear from individuals if that's what we want to do. And so is there a way that you maybe have, you know, five individuals speak at the beginning, and then, you know, limit that so business can still be done, but open it up at the end of meeting that if someone still has a grievance to air and they're still around us later on, they can stay here, and our job is to sit here and listen to them until their comments are made as well? And so how can we balance the business of the meeting at the beginning, but also still have an opportunity that every single person can have their mind and can air their grievance or air, hopefully, their positive stuff at some time, at the end of the meeting as well? So I think that that's the conversation that I'd be interested in hearing about. And then last comment I have, and that I know that we do disagree with, is that I think it's a waste of resources for the $150,000 that we're spending currently when there's a redundancy. And how could we better engage with citizens that are actually going to where people are instead of reading something that you have to have a subscription to that limits individuals when we already do it online? And so how can we make it more accessible for citizens to, no citizens reading a legal notice in the newspaper, anyway? I've never done that. I guarantee you, most citizens are not doing that, anyway. And so there are a period of very few people can, but we can also access that online, and individuals can do that at any of our public libraries in addition to that, too. So those are some of my rambling comments. I might have more, but I want to give my colleagues the ability to speak as well.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you. Oh, man, I have lots of comments. First of all, I appreciate everyone that has continued to hang in there with us. I really wish this item was the first one when we had half of a full house. This would have been much more of a dense conversation to have since we're going on over four hours. But I do appreciate everyone that is still with us. I think we had the town hall for homelessness, and I don't think we can always expect people to come to us. That has been proven over and over and over, whether we're having DABs and people come to those, or our breakfast, or coffees, or whatever. I think it's important for us to take some of our focus on going to the people and not always expecting them to come here. You know, no matter what time we have meetings, it's not going to be convenient for everybody. So I just want to keep that in mind. I do struggle a little bit with $150,000. Councilmember Johnson made the comment that, you know, he didn't think it was worth spending the money, but it's not about us, it's about everybody else, and that's what this whole conversation is about, is community engagement. And I know you're not wanting to spend the money, but some people do still read the paper. And I've been doing a big push on, if you go get your library card, you can read the Eagle for free, along with every other magazine and newspaper under the sun. So maybe we could focus more on getting people to read the paper and supporting our local newspaper all at the same time. So I'm really struggling with not supporting the contract that we have on that. And also, at the end of the day, it's our job to listen. So I'm struggling with having people, like, for example, today, sit here for four hours and 15 minutes just to have their five minutes. They have their five minutes to come and speak to us whenever they sign up, and they have their vote. Actually, I was reading an email from Carl, and that's what he said. He said, "We get to vote, and we get to come and speak at City Hall." And by taking that away, or making someone sit here, you know, my dad might come sit here for four or five hours and wait to speak for five minutes, but not everybody has time for that. So when they sign up for it, and it's the first 25 minutes of the meeting, and then they can go to work, I think at least they know when they're going to be getting out instead of sitting here and waiting for the meeting to get done. And I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Also, I want to thank everyone for being here. Appreciate it very much. Thank you for staff for being here, anybody who's still online who's watching. I just wanted to be preemptive. Legal Jennifer, I heard Councilmember Glasscock saying he's going to be making a motion. It's my understanding that no actionable item will become from this, that we can direct staff, maybe for future consideration, but we won't actually be making a motion or a vote this evening. Am I correct in that assumption?
Councilmember, that's correct. There's no ordinance before you here tonight. You are correct that council can direct staff to bring an ordinance with changes as you wish.
But we don't have to make a motion or vote on it, correct?
I think it'd be cleaner if you do want to direct staff to have that motion.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're all, because we have a policy, an internal policy, that says nothing goes on the agenda that isn't on there the Thursday prior by 5:00 PM. So just wanted to make sure we're clear with that. Thank you. Lots of discussions, lots of things have been said. I think this is the beginning of many conversations. Again, just a few comments regarding the Wichita Eagle and the contract, and a comment that was made that nobody reads legal notices in the Eagle. I don't know that. And so I want to make sure. And I live in a neighborhood, I live in an established neighborhood, I'm actually one of the youngest people in my neighborhood, and I'm old. And so all of my neighbors subscribe to the newspaper and active aging, and they don't use the internet. That's not their means to get their information. So I think having a blended mix of making sure that people get information, I'm for more publications. I think we should have our information in every publication that we can. We should have it online, we should have it social media, but we should also utilize our print media, even if it's print, but it's online. I just, I am absolutely for more public engagement and not in any way limiting the amount of access that people have to the information that we try and disseminate to them. So thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I will respectfully disagree with some of my colleagues. I am an advocate of using taxpayer dollars efficiently and paying $150,000 for two- or three-day-old news is not a good way to use money. I just don't think that's good. People, it's available online, it could be made available at libraries, printed copies at libraries, at City Hall. There's other ways that they can get that information in a printed form and save $150,000. So I just think if you ask Wichita residents if they want to spend $150,000 for legal publications in the Wichita Eagle, I think you'll get a resounding no. Thank you.
Before I come back to Councilmember Glasscock, can I have a, I have a question for staff? Specifically, what are other avenues that we pay any print media to share, whether it's community events, other citywide information besides public notices? How else do we pay? For what reasons do we pay?
I'm gonna ask Megan to come up here. I think she'd be a better shooter to answer that than I would.
Hello, Council. Megan Lovely, City Communications. At periodic times, we will pay to either print things or run radio ads. Traditional media is what we call that. I don't have a set budget, it really does depend on what's going on. Some of those things are grant-funded. We might place ads in the Wichita Eagle, Active Age. We just did an Active Age ad, actually, at your request, Councilmember Hoheisel, for the tax abatement, so year. So it really does depend, but it really does run the gamut.
Is, have we had a conversation about maybe opportunities to engage traditional media, i.e. radio, print, TV, on maybe having a specific Wichita News being published? So we currently publish wichita dot, Wichita News on wichita.gov, and like Councilmember Tuttle mentioned, not everyone uses the internet, and I very much respect, I come from traditional media. So I wanted to know, how else can we share the information? Like, there was a whole list in the slide deck of the things that are city information, the free public libraries, to just any other specific city news. How have we thought about other opportunities to engage traditional media?
Tyler showed a slide on some of the things that we do on a weekly, monthly basis in terms of our regular appearances on news, the things that we answer. If your question is whether we'd be open to doing like a paid placement or advertising, we'd be open to anything, our only limitation is funding.
How much do we currently spend regarding traditional media?
It really depends, and not all of it comes out of the straight communication budget. Some of it is departmental budget or grant-funded.
Could I direct staff to give us that information, maybe over the last three years, how we have utilized traditional media to engage community, whether it's by department or just from the communications budget? Because what I'm hearing right now is that we want to publish information in, whether it's radio, whether it's print, whether it's TV, we want these traditional media to still provide that information. But what I'm also hearing is that maybe not everyone gets just the public notifications. And I think maybe people need to understand, public notifications are for those ordinances that we pass, and they go on first reading or second reading. But what I think people are asking is public notices about city activities that are going on. Those are two different things. Can you explain those two for me?
So public notices in the terms that we discussed this evening, and please correct me, are in terms of like ordinance changes or zoning. Public notices, we actually have an option on our website, which Tyler can touch on if you're interested, to sign up for city events, meetings, all sorts of fun stuff. We also put that on our social media, and we do share it with our media partners.
Tyler, further expand on that.
So yeah, as far as the public notifications and all that, I don't think there's anything to sign up for, meaning alerts every time that's updated, but that's something we can look into. But yeah, we have a whole wide variety, I think I had a slide in there somewhere, but showing different things you can sign up, so you can get alerts on different calendar invites every time we put a news release out there. If there's alerts, news flash items, there's tons of different things you can sign up for, for alerts every time we post something on the website, along with newsletters and email distribution lists and all that.
Thank you. I don't know if I need to do something official, but I would like, as a council, to get the information regarding how much we spend on traditional media to try to outreach to community on radio, TV, and print. Councilmember Glasscock.
So, thank you, Mayor. So per Councilwoman Tuttle's distinction, any, if I were to direct staff today, does that require a motion and a second, or does that require just a direct ask from me?
If you're, like what the mayor was just requesting, it's just an administrative ask. It does not require a motion to get that information, for example. Councilmember, to ask staff to prepare an ordinance to bring back, that is a legislative act, and that would require by ordinance, your motion here with the majority, to bring that back to a council member, to a council meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you. Then I have a few, unless Councilman Johnson, do you have comments first? Okay.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just gonna say, not to be too redundant, because it is 10:28, I agree with my colleagues, Councilmember Glasscock and Councilmember Johnston, $150,000 for a legal notice, I think is a bit much, but I do like the creativity that I just heard with Councilmember Hoheisel in getting good information out in different sources. One of the examples I've always used is, I know a whole lot of people who read the Community Voice, and they may see something there, maybe not a legal notice, that interests them and engages them. And if we can look at, again, better ways of using money to taxpayer funds to reach taxpayers, I think that's always a worthwhile conversation. So I've appreciated that. And again, and maybe this is bad, I didn't even know that there were legal notices in a newspaper until like close to when I was running. So maybe there's other people who know more than me on that, but I think that we're doing a really good job of using our resources, our website, and city-related stuff for the legal notices from the city. But I think engagement in other ways for events or other information that we want to get out. And as we've talked about, some of the good things we're doing, it's not getting out as much as we want. I think it's worth having that conversation.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I agree with Councilman Johnson, Johnston, Hoheisel, Mayor Wu, when it comes to this as well. There's one quote from here, the presentation that staff presented, that I think is a testament to staff and our commitment to also engaging people civically. Says, "In terms of limitation, the number of people who can comment on an agenda item, the city of Wichita adopts an unrestricted approach, reflects a commitment to fostering robust discourse and democratic participation. That should not just be our goal on every individual agenda item, that should be our goal holistically when we're..." goal holistically when we're trying to hear concerns and hopefully, again, optimism from our citizens as well." I also love that Councilman Johnson brought up, if we were to look at other ways to engage, and I think Mayor, this goes with Mayor Wu and Councilman Hoheisel's suggestion, how better could we spend $150,000 to also hit more diverse subsets and also diverse publications? Where one individual may not read The Eagle, they may read the Community Voice, they may read another publication, and offering substantive information regarding, you know, rebate programs that we have. And I think there's better ways that we could look at spending $150,000, still in traditional mediums, while we're still offering the legal notices that individuals want via our website and other platforms as well. So, I think there's a lot of optimism there on how we can better engage people, and also engage more diverse voices and unique voices, which is the purpose of this. People that regularly engage with city council know how to engage with city council. How do we engage people that don't know how to engage with city council and the projects and, you know, programs that we're trying to implement? So, with that, and seeing there's nobody else on the board, I have three different considerations that I would direct staff. So, I'll do one, I'll read them all three, and then I'll offer each one individually for an up or down vote. Number one, I would move that we remove the seven-day advance requirement for people come to, to come to speak before council, that anybody, it's first come, first, so the individuals can show up, and we still limit it to a 30-minute public engagement period at the start, looking at other ways that we can engage people. I will, that's not the direct motion right now.
Mayor, thank you. I guess I'm confused, because I didn't think tonight could be an actionable item like removing the seven-day requirement to sign up.
I'm directing staff to do that, not that we're making that decision currently.
Thank you very much.
Yes, directing staff to do that. I'll clean that language up in a second. The second one that I would look at is that we direct staff to present before district advisory boards how we do engage people better. So, I think those conversations can result in, you know, time limits, comments before or after, if we have both engagement opportunities, limitation on the number of people, or do we have an unlimited number? I would prefer to lean towards an unlimited number, but I would be interested in hearing from our district advisory boards. So, that would be the subsequent motion, but I really do think that we have to have a separate thing, that if individuals want to show up, they should be able to speak before the body without signing up in advance. And so, I'm going to make those into different motions. And then, the third is that it would be a direction towards staff, a move that we review the contract with McClatchy Company on April 2nd and decide whether or not we're renewing and how we can better spend that. I think that gives the McClatchy Company time to look at it. The contract ends on August 31st. We have a 30-day out, but I also don't want to wait until then for them to be able to make decisions regarding publication. So, I know nobody's on the board, so I'm going to offer each motion individually. The first one is I move that we direct staff to remove the seven-day requirement to speak before the council, and that's a first-come, first-served basis for the first 30 minutes, still with a five-minute time requirement.
Second.
Do I need to clean that up?
If I could just add the language into prepare an ordinance amendment.
To prepare an ordinance for that.
Yes.
The motion to prepare an ordinance regarding the removal of the seven-day advance notice and instead moving it to a first-come, first-served for the first part, which is the public agenda item. So, this is a staff direction. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Ballard.
Sorry, thank you. Will there still be a limit on, like, how often they can speak?
Unless you wish to change it.
Okay.
Currently, what is the rule? Once a month. So, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Glasscock.
Yes, I believe this should answer Council, or Vice Mayor Ballard's comment about that. I would make a motion that we direct staff to take this to the district advisory boards in terms of how we engage the public differently. Specifically, questions regarding time limits, comments before or after, limitation on the number of speakers, how often someone can speak, and then open that up for other comments from DAB.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Glasscock.
And third, I would move that at the April 2nd meeting, we review our contract with McClatchy and Company regarding our list of public notices. And to be more direct, I'm going to change that motion. I make a motion to direct staff that at April 2nd, we deny extending the contract to begin August 31st of 2024 with McClatchy Companies.
Excuse me, if I may, add that language to further, just to legalize it. We would need to look at the city's charter ordinance to make that change. So, if that's part of your motion, I would add to consider a revision to the charter ordinance.
Okay. So, direct staff to consider revision of the charter ordinance regarding our contract to, with the intention to cancel the agreement with McClatchy Companies in the city of Wichita effective August 31st, 2024.
Thanks, Mayor. Friendly amendment, not renew rather than cancel.
Not renew. Yes, not cancel, not renew.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm kind of in the air on this one. I do think it's worth the conversation anyways, so I'll be supportive of bringing it up, but it's worth a discussion, so I can appreciate having the discussion anyways.
We have a motion and a second, and I see no further discussion. Madam Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes 5 to 2. Any further directions for staff, council members? I see none. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Retroactive approval of travel for Councilmember Tuttle to attend the House Welfare Committee meeting in Topeka, Kansas on March 14th, 2024.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I'm just going to do my district advisory board for time, and then I'll catch the rest next week. But I would like to appoint to District 2 Advisory Board Tyler York. I would like to reappoint to District 2 Advisory Board Tracy Adams, John Baker, Chris Broderick, Bruce Gass, Tim Johnson, Faith Martin, Jennifer McDonald, Jim Groff, Stephanie McCurdy, and San Lindeman, and I have sent these to the clerk. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Hello. Also with nominations, I nominate Nathan McClure to the Parks Board, to my district advisory board, Alan Oliver, Gentry Thiessen, Gage Hunt, Harry Wilson, John Whitmer, Alex Garcia Valado, June Johnson, Jim Kelly, Wally Bell, Rebecca Genick, Alex Martinez, and a youth member, Patrick Hoheisel. To the Library Board, I nominate Karen Shorter. To the Transit Advisory Board, Nick Hoheisel. To the Wichita Citizens Review Board, Daniel Martin. To the Airport Advisory Board, Sierra Scott. The Community Service Block Grant Review Committee, Stephanie Jaeger and Cheryl Bat. To the Diversity Inclusion Civil Rights Advisory Board, Tabitha Lehman. To the Ethics Advisory Board, Clark Owens. To the Food and Farm Council, Christopher Parrisho. The Historic Preservation Board, Janice D. Baum-Dixon. To MAPC and BCA, Tony Zimbalman. To PFRB, Nathan Schwedel. And to the Animal Advisory Board, Nancy Bradley. I will have further nominations next week.
Councilmember, I'm sure you'll send that list of all the names to...
Jamie, I will give you the list.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint to District Advisory Board Dave Sanford. And I'd like to appoint to the District Advisory Board, five, Jennifer Salvo and Sean Ballman. And I'd like to appoint to the Library Board, Michelle Garrett. And to the Historic Preservation Board, Chad Glenn. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
I think the city manager was trying to get a word in edgewise there, probably about all the dang Hoheisel.
Did I mess up again?
Getting appointed.
It was really quick, but I think you appointed a city employee, which is not allowed under our policy.
He was the current appointee, so I was not...
For what was the board?
Where's my list? PRFB.
Police, Fire, Retirement.
Oh, it's the retirement board.
Yep. He's the current one, but if there's a problem with that, then...
No, that's fine. If it's in the retirement board, I know that the employees have seats. I didn't know the council could appoint a employee.
Okay, yeah, I was just reappointing him.
But that's fine, if it's a reappointment, we'll just let it go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a clarification, Councilmember Glasscock, was one of those names John Whitmer?
Um, yes.
Okay. I personally cannot be supportive of John Whitmer. Just can't do it.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
I can't wait to see the judgment on my appointees over here, then. Okay, so, to DAB, Janet Johnson, Richard Ruth, Mike Loop, Debbie Pryor, Jesse Wigdahl, Tone Nguyen, Jerry McRae, and Geneva Chambers, those are all reappointments. Marco Lacosa to Airport Authority, reappointed. Philip Simon, reappointed to Parks Board. Vicky Chaney Little to, reappointed to Ethics Advisory. Deb Stevens, first appointment to Historic Preservation. Lauren Hirsch, reappointed to Library. Cindy Miles, reappointed to MAPC. Dinah Edmiston, reappointed to Transit. Janet Johnson, reappointed to CRB. Garrett Foster, reappointed to BI-PED. Ian Demery, reappointed to Diversity Inclusion Civil Rights. Bob Decker, first appointment to Employee Retirement. Paul Farhal, reappointed to CSBG. Mike Hastings, first appointment to Police and Fire. George L. Harris, appointment, reappointment to Animal Control. Jerry McGrew, first appointment to Food and Farm Council. And Ibrahim Abdallah, first appointment to Sustainability.
Before I make my appointments, for the folks who are still here and those who are still watching, please go to our website, wichita.gov, to look at the boards that currently have vacancies, because we would like to fill those vacancies with community members that are wanting to be engaged and care about specific topics. And these appointments are individuals that then advise us on those specific topics. So, this is an encouragement, yet again, to go to our website, wichita.gov, and look at the board's assignment. Councilmember Glasscock.
Support of clarifications are legal, because Councilman Johnson will be not voting for one. Do I need to remove him, and we vote on individually?
That's up to the council, how you'd like to handle that.
Thank you, Mayor. No, you can...
Okay. I didn't know what the process was, if I need to remove him, then we have to vote individually on it.
No, no, no. I am supportive of everyone but that one individual, so I will be voting no because of that, but everyone else can vote how they want.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
And now, I will make my appointments. I'm going to reappoint to the Transit Board, Susie Santo, who represents Visit Wichita. And two new appointments to the Transit Board, Eddie Brodkmarkle, and the Citizen Review Board, Robert Green. Do I have a motion for these appointments?
I move to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 5 to 2. Do we have any comments from council members? There are no comments.
I do. It's way past, it's way past my bedtime.
Sorry. So, then it goes to the adjournment. Do we have a vote, a motion and a second to adjourn? Oh, Councilmember Johnson.
I just wanted to read this 100-page report for all of us tonight.
Can we open the roll to adjourn the meeting, please? Oh, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Thank you so very much to everyone who's...
You're lucky you're not close.
Oh, motion passes 6-1. All right. Have a good night, everyone.